Aloha mai kako, aloha. Aloha everyone, thank you so much for everyone who made the drive to come over here to the west side. Welcome to the west side and for those of us residents who live here, thank you again for joining us and those online, thank you for joining us. Well, my name is Samantha Decourt. I serve as the Chair of the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board number thirty-six and I am calling this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we are in person at the Nanakuli Public Library and virtually on WebEx. We do have a very full agenda tonight, so to keep our items moving, I will go over some rules of speaking. If anyone wishes to speak, I will ask that in-person attendees line up at the microphone to my left, your right. Those joining us on WebEx, please raise your virtual hand. When recognized by the Chair, state your name clearly for the minutes. Comments must be kept under two minutes. Officials' monthly reports under three minutes and presenters under ten minutes. Sergeant at arms will be keeping time, so please end your comments when the timer goes off. I will also ask you to conclude your comments. I would like to remind everyone that this is a community forum, so we welcome all comments, concerns, questions, and even opinions. Please feel free to share your mana'o on our agenda items and remember to treat others with respect and engage in a spirit of aloha. With that being said, before we go to our first agenda item, we will go ahead and open in Pule. I did see our former Chair, Chair Patty Teruya Kahanamoku. I'm gonna ask if she could please open us in. And thank you for joining us, Chair. Thank you.
Mahalo, mahalo. Thank you for that. Aloha Board members, aloha residents. Poli kako. Father God, we thank you for this gathering today in Nanakuli. We bless all Board members, our discussion. We bless everyone that in attendance, that we can speak and share our mana'o of our community and to share with spirit of respect, spirit with mana'o and spirit with caring. We thank you, Father God, for our community. We continue to pray among all our west-side families and the people that are struggling along our community. Bless them, bless our family, bless everyone here as they depart after the meeting. We thank you and we give you honor, praise, and glory. Amen. Thank you so much. Aloha.
Amen, amen. Mahalo, thank you. Okay, first up, agenda item Honolulu Fire Department. If you could please go to the microphone and share your report.
Good evening. Captain Scott O'Sherrill at the Nanakuli Fire Station, here to give our monthly fire report for the month of May. Our statistics for fire, we had two structure fires, no wildland brush fires, five nuisance fires which are like rubbish fires. We had six activated alarms. We had no fire. For medical emergencies, we had one hundred and twenty-seven medical emergencies, four motor vehicle crash collisions, one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and no hazardous materials incidents. The fire safety tip for this month regards power outages. Hawaii is fire-prone with a year-round risk of fire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, June first to November thirtieth will increase their risk. HFD encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family, and your property through advanced planning and preparation. In the event of power outages, remember these safety tips. You should build a fourteen-day disaster supply kit. Take inventory of items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. You should know your medical needs, i.e. devices or refrigerated medicines. A general is available online at Honolulu.gov backslash DEM. Using appliances during power outages, avoid carbon monoxide poisoning, generators, camp stove, or sorry, or charcoal grill should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. You should turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips and detailed information, you can visit dot gov backslash power hyphen outages. And then starting July first, I'm sure you guys heard that Hawaiian Electric Company, HECO, will commence their PSPS Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program to reduce the risk of wildfires. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, HECO may preemptively shut off power in high-risk areas during periods of forecast high winds and drought. This program has been utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. A PSPS could last several hours or up to several days. The HFD and HECO will continue to work with the Board of Water Supply and other city, state, and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from a PSPS. If you need more information, you can visit HawaiianElectric.com for more information.
Very good. Thank you very much, Board members. Any questions for HFD? Board members, seeing none, community, any questions for HFD? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you so much for joining us. Please be safe out there. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Honolulu Police. If I see online, okay, Sergeant Fumi, go ahead if you can unmute yourself and give your report.
Aloha Board Chair, members, and residents of Nanakuli Mailei. Sergeant Fumi Moroka with HPD Kapole Police Station, Community Policing, have the stats for the month of May. The Nanakuli Mailei area. So motor vehicle thefts in May, we had twenty-nine of which three were in our area. Burglaries, twenty-three of which one was in our area. Thefts, one hundred and sixty-nine were reported, twenty-one in Nanakuli Mailei. UAMVs, which is unauthorized entry of motor vehicles, forty-five in the district, five in the Nanakuli Mailei area. Total of one hundred and eighty-nine citations for speeding, moving violations, and parking violations were issued. Total calls for service in the district was six thousand eight hundred ninety-nine. In the Nanakuli Mailei area, there was eleven hundred seventy-one calls. And as far as HPD for the PSPS that HECO is planning, I believe HECO is gonna give a presentation or discuss the details and will be supporting their plans. Any questions or concerns?
Very good. Thank you. Board members, any questions for HPD? Board members? Okay, seeing none, community, any questions? Please go ahead to the microphone, state your name clearly for the minutes.
Hello, mark my word. Sergeant, right? You know anything about the jacking at the mall this morning or lunchtime?
Yes, so there was a robbery and I can't go into too much details, but the suspect was caught in another district after he drove down for a while, yeah.
Right.
But yeah, I believe he was caught without any further incident.
So the other one, yeah, the other one was the shooting, yeah? That happened Saturday night or Saturday morning, Sunday morning. I guess they shot at, it wasn't random. I guess they knew each other. You got any follow-up on that?
Was that the Mokahua one?
Nanakuli?
I'd have to check on that one. I'm not sure. Was that was today?
Yeah, we're getting some different intel there on that. I'm sure you know that you can share with us.
I can check on that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Very good, community. Any other questions for HPD? Okay, seeing none.
Chair, so just for the sergeant, for the shooting that you're talking about, that was the individual driving on Farrington Highway about twelve AM on Saturday night, I believe it was, and their back of their windshield was shot out. That, the way I understand it, is that what you're alluding to? So does that explain a little bit more if you have any more information on that, or is it still have to go back and follow up on that? Not specifically what?
Yeah, they have to follow up. Sorry.
Okay, very good. All right, we will go ahead and move on to residents' community concerns. Community, if you have any concerns, please go to the microphone. Again, just a reminder that there is a two-minute limit. I don't see anybody getting up to the microphone. Oh, go ahead, please, make your way to the microphone. Those joining us virtually, if you have a community concern, please raise their virtual hand and I'll call on you.
Hi, my name is James Coles. I live in Maile. My concern is I would like to have, see, to find out how we can get speed humps put on St. John's Road in the back by Mailei Elementary School. Get a lot of people speeding up and down that road, even the bus drivers. The school bus drivers speeding up, down, and that road is only so narrow, so wide. You get kids going to school and going back from school, and you get a lot of cars and school buses flying down that road. Right up the road from Mailei Elementary School, that's the backside of St. John's Road. I would like to see some kind of action on that, putting in speed humps back there. We really need it. How many times we've told people to slow down, even that, I even, me and a couple of the neighbors even had the bus drivers flip us off because we tell them to slow down going through there, and the bus drivers, they don't care. We contacted the bus companies, we contacted the schools, nothing's been happening, nothing's been done. So I would like to see something, see if we can get something done about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Board member Corona, do you want to include that in your items for the Transportation Committee? Okay, very good. We have a hand raised online. I don't see.
I believe that was me.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Naomi Kukkak. I'm here, excuse me, I'm here behalf of Smoke Country Enterprises. I've previously been to the neighborhood boards and given some informal updates, so that's what I'm here doing again tonight. I just quickly wanted to pop in and give you guys an update on what is going on with our project. Last time I came in, we were getting ready to send our draft environmental assessment out for review officially from the state. And now that that has started wrapping up, we are gonna be getting ready to publish it for public comment. Now, our draft environmental assessment has actually been out for review or available for review since earlier this year in late January and February. However, we haven't really seen a lot of comments, and so we wanted to pop back in and remind you guys that it is available for anybody who does want to review it. The project itself is set to take place in Kapole, and so we did give a full formal presentation at that board. If anybody does want to go ahead and look at that, then I believe it was the January or the February neighborhood board that we gave a presentation at. What I'm gonna go ahead and do is in the chats, I'm going to share the link to the data room that contains all of our draft environmental assessment as well as the additional appendices and documents that you guys can go ahead and look through. And if you're unable to get the link, then you can go directly to our website at aloha-carbon.com, which I will also drop in the chats. And you can go ahead and access the data room through a link via the website. And then any comments can also be submitted to the website that is, or sorry, the email that is supplied over there. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Naomi, I just want to encourage you, if you could attend our committee, Water and Land Committee, to share more of your plans and we can go into further discussion about your presentation, the plans that you folks have.
Yeah, absolutely. By chance, do you know when that's coming up? I do usually receive the updates, but I don't know that I've seen that one come in, so.
Yeah, so Chair Malia Augustine will contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. Yells virtually, I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to presentations. So first up, we have two thousand and twenty-four Christmas on the Ave presentation, Carol Pelikai of. I'm sorry, does, does, does anybody have their virtual hand up? If you do, unmute yourself. If not, I have to move on to presentations. Okay, okay, go ahead. Lieutenant, go ahead, please.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't wanna, I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt, but I figured I'd address the question that one of the concerned residents had about the shooting. So while we were talking about it, I kinda looked it up. So just to address the concern, there was a, there was a report of a shooting where, I believe, a vehicle was struck. It was stemming from an argument that was over by, I think, Keaua Beach Park on the sixteenth. I think that might be what he's talking about. The suspect was not located and it's currently under investigation. I don't know if that answers his question.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. All right, okay, let's go ahead and move on. Two thousand and twenty-four Christmas on the Ave presentation, so we have with us Carol Pelikai from YNI Economic Development and Charlotte Mahoa of Aho Pua o Nanakuli. So go ahead.
Aloha, ahi ahi, aloha Chair Lady and members of the board. Thank you so much for allowing us to come back another year. This event will be our third annual event, and we thank you so much for supporting us for the past two years along with the Director, Colleen Watson, because you know both of you, it is a requirement that we get your support for this event along with all of the residents who live on Nanakuli Avenue, Third Road, Fourth Road, Fifth Road, and Sixth Road. So I bet the question is, did you get it? Each year, we have gotten one hundred percent. This year, we had a little bit of a challenge. I'm gonna be transparent, but we're working it out. And so will the event happen? Yes. Get your phones out, mark your calendars, Saturday, December fourteenth. We're working on exact time. It'll probably be from four to ten. It could be from five to ten, so we're working out those small details. But what I'd like to express to this board is that in the past two years, we have had no incidents. We have not interrupted service for the bus. It is still able to go up into the valley and pick up our residents and provide the transportation. And that is the same for this year. No deviations, no cancellations. How many of you here at this meeting attended Christmas on the Avenue? Can I see a show of hands? How awesome. Two hands. Thank you. Thank you, Patty. That is so awesome, because this event, for those of you who asked the question, what's so important about it? What does a community get from it? This event brings together people who have not seen each other for years. It really is a big family reunion, and that's why we're able to do it another year. It's because our community feels that aloha that this event brings out. So thank you to all of you who are here tonight. Thank you. I want to let you know that the YNI Economic Development Council is our fiscal sponsor. And so when you ask, what you guys do with all the money you raise? We have a financial management team that takes care of all of that. None of the funds come through our hands. It goes directly to Joe Lopaleo and the YNI Economic Development Council. Transparency for us, no issue. If you have a question, we are very easy to get ahold of, and we're happy to share all the information and answer any questions you may have. Let me tell you that Aho Pua o Nanakuli Homestead and its committees work very hard to put this event together. There's people like Bruce Young, Warren Hoohouli, Mark, where are you guys? Your neighbors from within your community that helped put this event together. And the support we've received from the Neighborhood Board, thank you so much. We cannot thank you enough. And so, Mr. Watson, you'll be receiving our letter soon requesting your support. And Samantha, thank you so much, all of you, for being there for us. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate. Between myself, Carol, Black Hoohouli, and the Board of Directors, we're happy to talk story with you if you have questions about what it is we're doing, how we're doing it. This year, there are gonna be a few changes because of the situation in securing one hundred percent. The event is actually going to move from Third Road, it's now going to begin at Fourth Road. The area between Third and Fourth Road will still remain accessible to those residents who live in that area, but we will monitor it. HFD will still have full access if there is a situation. But the event has, we've reduced the size of the event. We're gonna be about maybe twenty vendors short from last year. That's okay. We still have about eighty vendors that come out to support us. But if you have any questions, please, that's what we're here for. We're happy to answer them.
Great, very good. Board members' questions? Board Member Tector?
Hi, I just have one question. Is it possible to tell us what Aho Pua does and how the YNI Economic Development Economic Committee, what do they give and how do they give back, not only in trying to do all the finances, which is awesome? And how else can we be of help other than what he could possibly disclose to us? Like, is there any benefits to this, or is it profit? Is it possibly, you know, do high schools benefit from it? I'm just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's a valid question. Thank you for asking, because with any event, anything that goes on within the community statewide, whenever there is money involved, there is a question. What you guys do with all that money? So if you think just a tad bit and think about all the expenses that go into this event, I will tell you the biggest expense is insurance to make sure if there is some problem that they're not gonna come knocking at my door to collect on my homeowner's insurance, but that the event is covered one hundred percent. So the biggest expense for an event like this is its insurance. And I know Patty can vouch, she's a, puts on many events within our community. Number two, how do you keep the event safe? You hire special-duty officers. Do you get undercover? Do you get people without uniform? If they want to come support, of course, but we never skip on hiring special-duty officers, one hundred percent. Now, this year, I will share with you that the mayor offered to sponsor the cost of that. If it worked out, they would have had to take all the officers from on the coast to put them to our event, and we couldn't accept that, no, by no means. So we went out. We had officers from within our community talk to their friends. Can you come out? Do they pay? Of course we pay, and we pay you the night of the event, not the next day, not the check in the mail. We pay you the night of the event. So those two, just those two alone, the expenses for that, when you ask the question, how else does the community benefit? And you, I think you mentioned, the high school? The high school, does the event make a contribution? Okay, so when you talk about benefits, when we go out and ask for sponsors such as Hawaiian Electric, PVT, many, many sponsors, we are very specific on what those funds are going to be used for. Come here, how many schools? They have given us money to purchase meals for our volunteers. Can we take that money and use it for, to buy shirts? No. So if we tell them we're gonna use the money to do this, we cannot deviate and use it to do something else. At this point, the funds we have raised for Christmas on the Avenue, at the end of each year, twenty-two and twenty-three, we have had a small amount of money left over, which is used to start up the following year. What do you mean start up the following year? Like I said, insurance, there are advertising that needs to be done, west-side stories, a whole page. Anybody have any idea what that cost is? It's over a thousand dollars for one page. So those are the kinds of things that we are using the money for. So yes, if you're asking, you get money at the end of the year? Yes, we do. How does that happen? Because we're very careful of how we use our sponsors' money. A budget is prepared, we review it, we look at it. Do we need it? Yes, no? If it's yes, how are you gonna spend it? And receipts are important.
Okay, I'm gonna just kinda summarize and close up this, this question, because I think there are other questions. But in summary, the balance goes over to the next Christmas on the Ave. Okay, great, thank you. Board Member Augustine?
Thank you so much. My question was, have you looked at the dates for the parades in conjunction with your event for this year? As last year, we were kinda conflicted with YNI Christmas Parade and also Kapole Christmas City Lights Parade.
So we are blessed that the biggest event that happens on the same day as Christmas on the Avenue is the Honolulu Marathon. And this year, it is the week, the Saturday before our event. How does that help us? It opens up the availability for special-duty officers. Does that mean we're still gonna be kind of funky heads with the parade? We look at all of that. There are things that we cannot deviate. Kapole City Lights, we have had our event and they've had their event on the same day for years. People in our community stay home in general. They stay home and they visit and they enjoy Christmas on the Avenue. They don't go out. So we don't see that as a problem. We do understand the parade causes, scheduling difficulties for families. We understand that, but December fourteenth is the date for our event this year.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Board Member Myers?
Just really quickly, I wanted to make a comment. Mahalo for the update. Thank you for letting us know that you're gonna shorten it from Fourth Road to Sixth Road. It was very successful for the last two, for two years. I'm looking forward to seeing another successful year in Christmas time. It does gather everyone together, so I'm looking forward to you coming back to our board with the final plans. And then also with regards to when the vendors are, you know, reserve a stock.
That's the biggest question. When can we apply? We're working on it. We will definitely come back in a month or two. to share that information with you so you can help us get it out to our vendors. Please know that those who live on Nanakuli Avenue and all of the residents that signed a letter of support that allows us to move forward with this event, we have taken that into serious consideration in providing a benefit to those residents who live on Nanakuli Avenue and the side streets. So exciting stuff coming up.
Great. Thank you very much. Board member Corona?
Yes, just I have one, one quick question. I remember last year I was, I was helping with the Operation Blue Light. And so we're, we're staged up on Fourth Road and everything for the whole night for that. But I noticed a lot of vendors were still coming through after the cutoff period to try to get set up. And that was kind of causing a problem. They were telling us they were trying to come up the Ave, but then they were told, no, you can't go the Ave. You have to go down this way and come around. And then, so it caused backup and a little problem. And then as the event was getting ready to start, still have the vendors with their trailers and stuff coming down Fourth Road. So is there a different way, a way of looking at it for this year's Christmas on the Ave to address that?
Yes. So one of the things we do with Christmas on the Avenue is we have a mass meeting with all of the vendors, whether you're food or craft. We meet with them. We share the guidelines. We tell them the do's and the don'ts. Whether they get that information to their team, it's been a concern and challenge. We allow the vendors to select their own booths because we don't want them to say, you gave me one junk location. I never make money. This event, everybody makes money. But we're going to try a few different things this year that we're working on. So I will make sure that that issue is brought up. The vendors know. If they cannot get through, they got to walk their things in. That's something we do for all events, not only this one. But they don't listen sometimes.
I just feel bad when they get there and they say, we're done. You can't come through no more. You know, it's so hard.
So our security and road closure teams will be telling them definitely this year, I'm sorry, you may enter, but you will need to walk your things in.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. We're going to go ahead and move over to a board member IO, and then we'll open it up to community for questions. Go ahead.
Oh, much for one booth.
We don't.
Vendor, the vendor.
We don't have that information yet. I apologize. We will come back with the details. Yes.
All right. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up to community that's in the room first. Community, if you have any questions for Christmas on the Ave, please go to the microphone. And then those online, please raise your virtual hands.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, you know, I want to commend the Aho'opoa o Nanakuli Hawaiian Homestead for stepping up and the economic development. It's not easy to do an event. I have done for five years Prince Kohio Festival for our community. I think we're so fortunate in Nanakuli to have these major events in our Lahui and having family, our fellowship. You get to meet everyone. So, you know, Sharlita is right. It's, the funding is tough. It's hard to get sponsors. Every year, we literally have to beg for, for funding. Things cost expensive. You have the barriers. You have lights. You have everything else, the generators, your sound system. All of these things are very costly, you know. And so I commend them for their initiative to bring this type of event to our homestead and to bring families out and just a fellowship with our churches. Pastor Allen, we do the Blue Light. I go out and get Toys for Tots and help with the, with the toys. So it's a whole cocko thing, you know, with Hawaiian Electric. And, and people that step up to sponsor is what we, you know, we are blessed to have. So I just wanted to thank them for being here and to be openly, you know, not very many people come here and say, I'm going to do this event and I want part of you guys to help and plan. So, you know, I commend them for coming to the board and to the community to, to give us, you know, some information and give us hope. That's what we need in our community. So thank you so much. Thank you. Mahalo.
Very good. Thank you very much. Community, any other questions? Oh, go ahead. Up to the microphone. Thank you.
Aloha. Jan McKeppa at Yani Valley Homestead Community Association. I was fortunate enough to be a vendor on the, a couple of years ago. It was a lot of people and to the point where sometimes it's hard to walk around. But that only shows that it is a success. There were some booths that couldn't be accessed because food booths had lines. But as I know with a lot of craft fairs, that things can only get better by learning from what happens in the past. So I just wanted to come on board to say that our homestead supports Christmas on the Avenue and everything that you folks do for the community. So mahalo.
Madam Chair, if I can just share, one of the exciting projects that was brought to light this past year is called Project Legacy. It honors the first settlers in the homestead. The families, we, we were able to identify some 200 families. This year, they're looking to increase that by another couple hundred. But to honor them and to be able to talk with them, what was it like when you selected your property? I went from that mango tree to that mango tree over there. It's those kinds of stories and they don't stop. They continue. They're so proud of being one of the first families to live on Nanakuli Homestead. So exciting. So we're going to do that again this year. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you very much. If there's no other questions, I'm going to go to online. There is a question online from Kumu Piper. This question is for either of you. Is there a waste management plan for Christmas of plastic, food, paper, cardboard, et cetera?
So, Kumu Piper, I will be making contact with you in regards to the recycling. We did not have a recycling program for the first two years, but we are looking at that for this year. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, Kumu, Sharlita will get in touch with you. And then if there are any other questions, please raise your virtual hands. And if I'm not calling on you, that means I don't see your hand. Please go ahead and unmute yourself. I might be having technical difficulty on my end. If not, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next presenter. All right. Very good. Okay, thank, oh, go ahead.
Is it possible for us to get approval so that we can submit everything to the city and county in the next month?
Okay. Board, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the 2024 Christmas on the Ave?
I'll make a motion to support the, our Neighborhood Board, Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board, support the 2024 Nanakuli Christmas on the Ave on December 14th.
Very good. Second? Do I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
Second. Okay, great. So we're in voting. I'm going to go ahead and take a voice vote. So all of those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, all those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board will go ahead and support the 2024 Christmas on the Avenue, December 14th. And we look forward to seeing you back before then to update us with your plans. Please come and bring sponsorship packages as well. I'm sure that there are people maybe even in the room right now or that will be in the room that can help to contribute to this, this event. So thank you very much. Okay. Very good. Awesome. Okay. So we are moving on to our next agenda is item Yani Valley Homestead Community Association, Economic Development Project located at 86220 Farrington Highway. We have Jan McKeppa. We're pulling up your slides online. We do have Ikaika on the line as well. Is he going to be presenting or he's just available for questions?
Available for questions.
Okay, all right. So go ahead, take it away.
Mahalo to Chair and the board for having our homestead here to present. Introduction, my name is Jan McKeppa. I am the Peliki Kena for the Yani Valley Homestead Community Association. We are seeking board support on our community development project. And I am glad to see that the chair is here. For this project, there's been, you know, we've been looking at it, doing our due diligence for the last year and a half. And there's been a lot of kuka kuka, a lot of meetings, a lot of planning, a lot of wish lists. We've been working with the planning department, the land management department, planning people in general. And so I wanted to come tonight to share what are some of the plans that we have for this project. Some of the things are new to some people here and I just wanted to share what we're, what we're doing. So again, we are Yani Valley Homestead Community Association. We are a new and learning economic development project. We did get the, the location or the parcel that's located at 86220 Farrington Highway. Next slide, please. So an overview is the Yani Valley Homestead Community Association obtained a 2.67 acre parcel through a right-of-entry process from the Department of Hawaiian Homeland located at 86220 Farrington Highway. For those that don't know where this property is, it is the one that is located right next to the wastewater treatment plant. It is where the city and county currently uses to house their trash bins that we all need more of at our homes. We've aptly named this parcel Aina Ike, and our vision is for a community-based economic development project, providing services for, services to homesteaders and members of our Yani Moku. We currently are collaborating with three partners. So the partner is the Yani Sustainability Co-op. It is a community-owned solar project. West Oahu Funeral Services, which is a crematorium service organization. And the newly added, still in the talks of what we want to do and we've been working and moving forward with is Le Foundation, who is a community education, training, and development organization focused on clean and renewable energy. So just yesterday, the department approved our conversion from right-of-entry to a 30-year general lease with the possibility of extension to a 65-year maximum total. At the end of that 65-year lease, of course, our homestead, we go back to the table with the department to talk story. We don't currently know what it will look like in the next 65 years, but we know that the potential of this awesome opportunity for our community is there. So this project is a Yani Valley Homestead Community Association Economic Development Project. What this means is that the services offered will benefit the entire Yani Moku. So that is the reason why we're here in Nanakuli presenting tonight because even though the parcel is not in the Nanakuli Maile Neighborhood Board jurisdiction, it will service all of us. Next slide. So the following is more information on what I call anchor partners for Aina Ike. So the first one is the Yani Sustainability Cooperative. They are working in partnership with Shake, Shake Energy, and they are a community-owned solar project. Next slide. Their board consists of Kapua Kiliko Kamai, who is the president, Georgette Stevens, who is the vice president, Sharpoy, who is a director, and Ka'aka'ohu Ahilani, who is also a director. And Auntie Kapua is currently, I believe, at the hospital. Her mo'ou is being born as we speak, so we want to congratulate her. Next slide. So there's been some movement in where the placement of the rooftop panels are going to be. So on this slide here, this is aerial view of the parcel. There are a total of four buildings. So there's three of the long buildings and then there's a hale on the property. So this is an aerial view and the proposed panels that will be mounted on the existing rooftops and three new carports. There are enough panels to serve 70 to 80 households in our Yani Valley Homestead. This is a pilot project. And so what the Sustainability Cooperative is trying to do is by having it be a pilot project serving 70 to 80 households in our homestead, they are allowing these families to pull electricity from these panels that'll go back to the utility. And then the utility company will then give discounts to these families on their electric bill. So currently, the carports are kind of being moved around only because the internal department requirements may have carports moved and realigned for best management practices of the parcel. Next slide. So this is basically how it works. So the panels will be located on the rooftops of these buildings. And then the energy that is generated will, again, go back to the utility company. Utility company will give our families discount on their HECO bill. So what the cooperative is trying to do is by using this as a pilot project, they're hoping to expand later on to other areas in our Moku to service more people, not just in our homestead, but waitlisters, homeowners, whatever the case may be. So they're hoping to expand on this. Next. So Yar Cooperative, it is an owned, controlled, it is owned and controlled by the members, not outside investors. As a pilot project for Yani Valley Homestead residents, 70 to 80 families will be chosen to participate. And this program is going to be done through a vetting process. Electric generated from the solar panels will allow for monthly discounts. And it is motivated by service, not profit. And possible future projects tailored after this model would benefit residents throughout our Yani Moku. All right. The second partnering organization is the West Oahu Funeral Services. And the West Oahu Funeral Services is headed by Auntie Laurie Buchanan. She also has on her team Uncle Moku Buchanan, her son Makana Buchanan, and a business partner Darren Tuchia, as well as Le Aloha and Harry Asadillo. So Le Aloha is Auntie Laurie's daughter, and she is also a resident of our homestead. The West Oahu Funeral Services will be occupying the Ma'oka building at the back of the parcel. It is the first crematory in the Yani Moku. So yes, we are proposing to have a crematory here on the Yani coasts. Residents now have an end-of-life option within our own community. It is Hawaiian-owned. It is wahine-owned. Apparatus used complies with all state of Hawaii and Department of Health rules and regulations. And if you folks know Auntie Laurie, you know that she is all about regulations and clean air and malama'aina and all of those things. So there are community opportunities for existing businesses such as venues, food, flowers, tables and chairs, tent rentals, things of that nature. So this is a side view of the cremation unit with the stack and then the apparatus itself. And for those that have questions, I am not the person to ask. That is Auntie Laurie's babies. So she will be available for questions for anyone. Okay, next. This is the newest proposed partner. They are called Le Foundation. They are leeward empowerment initiatives. A lot of you are familiar with Sharpoy and her, you know, what is, what she is doing with clean energy on our Yani coasts. Next. So it is a small family foundation of board members currently made up of Ohana. So they are preparing to pursue a nonprofit status later this year and will be growing the board of directors' numbers and capacity. So it does consist of Sharpoy, who is on the right-hand side, her father next to her, Uncle Po'oi, and then Sonao Po'oi, and then Ivan Tavares. Next. So what is Le Foundation? They hope to occupy the middle building of the parcel. And they have proposed to do all of the funding to get this building up to building code and up and running. So Le does lead a collective campaign called Energize Yani Moku that some of you may already be familiar with. They cultivate a community navigating and engaging in clean and renewable energy and decreasing carbon footprint. They will coordinate with energy advocacy, planning education, design career pathways, and workforce development training. It's a bundled approach to sharing programs, projects, information, and resources for the community to participate. Next. So again, leeward empowerment initiative. A community education, training, and development organization focused on increasing the literacy of our communities. It is a native Hawaiian-controlled nonprofit in Yani on the west side of Oahu, primarily servicing all native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islanders and communities experiencing. primarily servicing all native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islanders and communities experiencing injustice and inadequacies. Their mission is empowering communities through literacy, meaningful engagement, and experiential learning. So it does list a slew of things that they do. So they are involved with Energize Waianae Moku, Ke'ala Hanao, Solarize 808. They assist in development of robust community benefit plans. They also deal with education or the scheme for career pathways, including industry, business, and workforce development. And they are also a cross-sector collaborative partner. Next. And last but not least is us. We are the Waianae Valley Homestead Community Association, and this is our homestead. So our board consists of myself, Pele Kikena. We also have Ke'ala Rosario, who is our Hope Pele Kikena. Linda Jury is our secretary, Ke'ha'ha'ano is our treasurer. Auntie Locana, who is here tonight, is our director, and Auntie Georgiana is also our director.
Okay, very good, thank you. No, right?
We're not called yet.
Okay. Well, we have a 10-minute limit. So actually, I'm just going to go into questions because I think the board member and community has questions, and we have a few other presentations. So if anybody has any questions that pertain to the slides, then we'll move to the slides.
All right. Jeff, would you be able to go to the last slide? Because it does include all of our emails for those that want to take a picture. If you folks have questions beyond tonight's meeting that you folks might want to email any of these people that you have questions for.
Perfect, okay, let's go to questions. Board Member Corona, Board Member Myers, go ahead, and then Board Member Agustin.
Thank you very much. And I remember this being talked about, about the solar initiative a few months ago, I think it was. But I've got a lot of questions, but I won't do it right now. But my main question was, the services that are provided on the site right now, are those still going to stay there from the city for the refuse collection? And if not, do you know where they're being moved to once you take over?
Now that we have the general lease, they will be asked to vacate. I do not know where they will be putting their things, but they've already been notified prior that when we do come for the general lease, that they'll have six months to move their things out.
Awesome, okay, thank you. And then the PowerPoint, the briefing you had here, do we have a copy of that? I'd like to have a copy of that if I could, the PowerPoint. Is it, okay, it's there now? Yes, please, so I can follow up all the other questions. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I missed your presentation yesterday at DHHL. I appreciate seeing your presentation today. A couple of things that I wanted to point out. Our neighborhood board had supported Peter Savio when he had a solar farm exactly the way that you were explaining how it would be. Some of the concerns was that it would be low on the ground. So I appreciate that you're showing us that it's going to be on the rooftop. So I appreciate that. But our board does support solar farm. Also, regarding the crematory, I wanted to highlight that there's only two places in the state on Hawaiian homeland that have cemetery. That's Nanookuli and Ho'olehua Molokai. So what I appreciate is that Auntie Laurie is in Molokai. Her Ohana is here, and that you will be bringing crematory services. Because one of the things that's really challenging is that if you don't have the money to get the plot and the casket and everything, many of us scatter our families in the ocean. So I appreciate that it will be a Hawaiian that will be serving us. The other thing is that when I go to Vineyard Zippies, I'm just straddled by crematories. There's Hosoi by the parking lot side, and then there's Borthwick when you enter into Zippies. So I've never felt, you know, smelled anything. And then, of course, there's Chinatown and all those high-rises there. And so I appreciate when I saw Auntie's presentation regarding crematory at another time, and I appreciated when you went to DHHL the last time. So I appreciated that she had shared the technology that goes into it. And now it's going to be having more services. One of the things that was mentioned, that I was told, was a concern about Waianae Comprehensive. I want to let you know that myself, and I've seen many faces in here, we've had families that had died there in the emergency room. I had three uncles and two aunties that died there when the ambulance took them there. So we're not afraid of spirits having died there, that's part of life. And they died at the Waianae Comprehensive, and we've had to deal with that. So I'm not afraid of having a crematory there because we have to deal with our families' bodies when they pass away. And so that's just part of life. I appreciate, again, that a native Hawaiian entity will be affording us these services. So I just wanted to tell you, I really appreciate it, and mahalo.
Thank you, thank you, Board Member Myers. Board Member Agustin, and then we'll go to Board Member Tector.
Thank you. So in the process of establishing solar on top of the roofs and translating that to prioritize the 70 to 80 leases on DHHL land, how does that get calculated so that HICO or whoever the provider is appropriates the right amount to the discount per home?
I will defer that question to Ali Andrews, who is online.
Okay, Ali, if you could unmute and respond to Board Member Agustin's question.
Yes, absolutely. And aloha, my name is Ali Andrews. I'm with Shake Energy Collaborative, which is partnering with the Waianae Sustainability Co-op on the development of this project. And WSC for short created a rubric, I would call it, of how they would qualify applicants who would want to subscribe to this project. And I don't have the rubric right in front of me, but I will describe it kind of qualitatively. What they decided to do was prioritize first lessees that are living in Waianae Valley Homestead, and then as well wanting to give priority to households that self-verify as low-income. And then I think there were a couple other qualifications, and I'm sorry, I'm a little unprepared to answer this question, but I'll put the rest in the chat unless anybody else from Waianae Sustainability Co-op wants to fill in on how they decided to prioritize applicants for the 70 to 80 homes.
So Ali, I think the question was, how are they determining the discounted fees for these families?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, so the discount that the co-op is able to offer the households that subscribe will ultimately come down to how much it will cost the co-op to build the project and how much of that cost they are able to get from grants and/or tax credits. So right now, the project is expected to cost around $2 million. If we're able to get the cost lower or the cost higher, I mean, we don't want the cost to go higher. If we're able to get the cost lower, that means that the co-op will be able to take out less debt and therefore have a lower debt payment and therefore have to charge customers fewer dollars on a monthly basis in order to cover costs. If we are, right now, we're in the process of applying for a tax credit bonus adder that would qualify the project for a 20% extra tax credit. And that would enable the co-op to pay down their loan earlier with this tax credit money. They're a nonprofit cooperative, so they can get a tax refund instead of recruiting a tax equity investor. So right now, without the extra tax credits and without the grants, we're shooting for around a 10% savings for subscribers. But again, if we're able to get a higher amount of tax credits and maybe even apply for and qualify for some loans, we will be able to lower that amount. The cooperative is a nonprofit cooperative, so they operate at cost. They will charge their customers the same amount of money that it requires them to cover the operations and maintenance and any other ongoing costs like insurance. I'm sorry for misinterpreting the first question, hopefully that answered it.
Thank you, Ali. And then that does answer my question. And then the second question that I have is in relation to the crematory. Will that be prioritized to the beneficiaries as well? And what is your process in giving that service to the community?
Okay, so, good question. So I just wanted to make a point that all of the services that we are offering is with the intent of benefiting our beneficiaries. So we've also been, we've always been about beneficiary, ourselves as a homestead association, benefiting beneficiaries. So Auntie Laurie will work with each individual family on cost-wise. If you are a homesteader, she can probably give you a discount. That is not for me to say, that is for Auntie Laurie to say. She will work individually with people. If you're having a hard time, she'll sit down, talk story with you. I do know that she does not charge if a child passes away, and that would probably be extended to this program as well. So all of our services that we will be offering will benefit our beneficiaries. Thank you. Aloha. My question would be, this bundle approach that you were presenting, there's a lot of potential details that could be missing. I like the crematory, I like, you know, the solar to an extent. If it's not going to benefit the beneficiaries, that the usage, and it goes to HICO or whatever purposes, as to say, HICO may encounter, you know, blackouts, then the solar would kind of, you know, pick up that. And so there's a lot of gray areas. And the West Oahu, the Buchanan's, if they could assure us that they would be the sole, like, gatekeeper of that crematory and not be utilized for unknown, whatever, animals deaths that could be secretly, you know, utilized. And anything in Waianae is possible. But the businesses, they're with Shar Po, and they do headstones. So a huge bundle, the 501(c)(3) is not in place. But before I get a support, can we really get in details who's doing what? You showed us their matrix, but again, I didn't get the report. So it's probably online right now. But if that could be secured, I'd feel safe. And it is a valid question, and I thank you for that. We are, and we can get all of that information to you. You can email everyone directly. Regarding Auntie Laurie, I am confident enough to say that she won't be doing things like that. She does, her family does have a funeral mortuary on Molokai that they have operated for over 50 years, her parents and so on. And so what she's wanting to do is she's wanting to bring it to Waianae. We've entertained the idea because all of us know that death is inevitable. We also know that it is a hardship financially for families who don't have funds. We see the GoFundMe pages, we see the celebration of life on the beaches. And so this is just another option for our community to not have to go out to other crematories and do à la carte packages. Yeah, oh, I want this, I want this, I want that. So this is how much it's going to cost you. So it's just giving an end-of-life option to our community here. But I will get the information to you, and we are available to sit down, talk story, get all of that gray areas out. Mahalo.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other questions? If not, we'll go to community. All right, community, any questions? Please go ahead to the microphone, and those that are online, please raise your virtual hand.
I lost what happened yesterday. I left. This is on Hawaiian homestead. This thing, one of these. It's called a... I had to burn three times. And the price went up and up. So my oldest brother called me, he says, Shake and Bake. I said, what, you put them in a bag? No, no, when I go. I said, I'll work on that. Okay? What a great idea. We're talking about the cost, yeah? Free, free. You cannot come over here free. We burn you free. Now, we're going to deal with the general public, right? We've got to charge, yeah? So, you know, Uncle Po, my cousin, we all, we know Uncle him. What an idea that I didn't know to have a, I'll call it an oven, yeah? So now we're, how much property is that? Are we looking at to have this? 2.67 acres. Really that much? Need that much?
We need more.
Okay. Yeah, not 1,000. Not 10 acres, 10,000 acres that we need. So since we're getting into this, for years I've been trying to get how much people is buried at our graveyard. And nobody called me back. So we're taking one guess right now. Without something, if you have family there, you can submit the name so we can do. I'm up there counting graves, any unmarked graves.
Okay.
Nobody know. So now tonight, you can put them out. You have any family at the cemetery, you can submit a name so we can write them. You can find them. You can tell me, but I've got to walk the whole graveyard to look for the name.
Wait, wait, Uncle, what is your question? What is your question?
Since getting into what she said.
Okay.
It's about that concern too, at the graveyard.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Please go to the microphones, state your name for the minutes.
Good evening, my name is Edmund. My question is about the solar panels at the, if I know that spot, I think I do. That's the old Waianae Corporation, Department of City Maintenance, right? And so there's some existing buildings there, and you're going to put the, what, the panels on the existing buildings? Just, okay, so when somebody asked about the cost, right? And Ali, I think was her name, she brought up a lot of stuff about incentives, tax breaks, blah, blah, blah. But the thing is, you know, anything to do with EV that had their discounts are slowly fading away. All those with solar panels who was the pioneers to put it on their house are slowly going away. All the incentives that they thought they were getting is now being removed from them, right? So I'm wondering if this is, you're going to put up, what, $2 million upfront just to, hopefully going to be costing $2 million into something that will, things can change in government, and HICO can change all their rates and all your costs, what you think is down here is going to be now up here. So is this something you really want to get into, but man, you could lose it all?
So I'll respond to that question. Ali and Shake Energy is a corporation that deals and does and works with organizations specifically like this. They are also part of PSEF, which I don't know what the acronym is, but it is an international organization that does the same thing around the world with other organizations that are like-minded. So I am confident that this is a program that works. But I am more confident that the benefits that will go towards our residents, even though it may be 10%, yeah? If the cooperative can raise money, that means more benefits to our families. 10% might not sound like a lot to some, but 5% savings for me is good. 10% is even better. And I know that the Shake Energy and the cooperative continues to look for ways to even get better benefits for our beneficiaries.
Okay, very good, thank you. Go ahead, up to the microphone, thank you.
Aloha, my name is Locana Kelly Ekoapoa. Although I am a...
Although I am a board member, I am a beneficiary first. And as a beneficiary first, the opportunity for not just myself, but my children and my children's children. And so when we talk about being a beneficiary, we're talking about Prince Kuhio. Prince Kuhio, who was the one who was able to afford us to have these opportunities. His vision was to give our people the opportunity to be economic development, to be cattlemen, to be mercantiles. He gave us those opportunities. So when we sit at this land, this Aina Ike, which is, we call it the stinkpot, right? That's where the city and county rests. This is an industrial zone where there's not too many things that can happen. There's not too many people. At one time, they were entertaining to put our kupuna there, to build kupuna housing. To me, that is so heva that we would even consider to put our kupuna in a stinkpot area. But in industrial areas, something like this where you can have the economic development, that is something that's more viable. That is something that we will bring not only life to our people, but it'll bring education opportunities. Now, we have different pieces that are moving and we're still in, we're in the learning phases. Us Hawaiians need, and I'm not, I'm not pleading, I'm said, we need to support Hawaiians. This is a Hawaiian-based entity that are serving our Hawaiians. So we're, we're serving each other. And in that, we have these partners who want, who has the same heart, the same vision to wanna help us to be successful. There's so much opportunities to fail. And we may even have our own people that help us to fail. So when we come to you, we come to you out of the heart of having opportunity for our people. We're learning as we go along. We'll make mistakes as we go along, but we want to envision and have a dream that we hopefully can capture, not for ourselves, for our future generation. Hawaiians worked with their hands. In these opportunities, we have a lot of things that our, our people, our children will be able to grasp. Lay Foundation is a strong economic development training that will afford that for our children. Our children may have some disability in learnings, but when you tell them and you show them their visual, they grasp that so much easier. These are moving pieces. And we're not perfect in everything that we do. We come to ask for your support. Whether you do or not, we already have the grace of God where we've got a general lease. We've got things that we've gotta do. We're still preparing with our 501(c)(3). We don't have all the answers tonight. We'll try to bring them as we come along. But all we're asking is that to give us that opportunity to start someplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. And community, so just doing a time check, we spent about 30 minutes on this presentation. I'll take one, maybe two more questions, then we'll have to move on to the next presentation. But if anybody else in the room has any more questions, please line up to the microphone. I don't see anybody raising their virtual hand. Do you see anybody raising your virtual hand? Okay. All right, very good. Yeah, okay. We'll go ahead and move over to the next agenda item. So the next presentation, actually, I'm gonna be excuse me, I'm gonna be going out of order. We're going to be taking presentations that are actually in the room. Our next item, Nana Ike Ola Self Help Housing Project is gonna be joining us virtually. So Claudia, if you don't mind, I'm gonna be taking the presenters that are here in the room. And then we'll go ahead and have you join us after the presenters that are in the room go ahead and present. So I call my, but thank you very much. Okay?
It's fine.
So up next, we're gonna go ahead and call up Hawaiian Electric. Hawaiian Electric Company, they have their wildfire safety measures. I know that there are a lot of concerns, a lot of issues, a lot of things that our community has to ask Hiko. So we're gonna go ahead and allow them to go through their presentation. I would encourage you to keep it brief. I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of questions for you, most of which will probably be pertaining to your presentation anyway. So go ahead and introduce yourself. Thank you so much for being with us.
Aloha Chair, aloha, community members, board members. Kurt Sui from Hawaiian Electric. Here tonight to share information about what HFD mentioned, Hawaiian Electric's wildfire safety strategy, including what was called Public Safety Power Shutoffs, also called PSS. We all know that wildfires are a top hazard here in Hawaii. And Hawaiian Electric has an important role to keep the communities, our community, safe. We may preemptively shut off power to areas and that are at high risk of wildfires during periods of high winds, low humidity and drought to reduce the potential for ignition from our equipment. We understand that this is a disruption and a hardship on communities. Sure. Is that better? Sorry. We're working closely with first responders, critical service providers and emergency management agencies to do this in a way that is safe. PSS could last or even several days depending on weather conditions. It's possible that we won't need to do it, but we just want everybody, ourselves included, to be prepared. Can we advance to the first slide, please? So this is just a handout. Everyone can, won't go through it in detail, but just a summary of the additional items, the actions that we're taking to reduce the risk of wildfires on, across the islands that we serve. Right now, circuit breakers are set to fast trip. They're more sensitive. So that when there's disturbances, it reduces the potential for sparks or ignition. We block a function called re-closing in high wildfire risk areas where the circuits automatically programmed to turn back on when it's, when a disruption occurs. And this is again to reduce the potential for sparking or ignition. We're increasing our vegetation and hazard tree management program. We're doing system hardening and undergrounding power lines in strategic, strategic at-risk areas. And again, working with our partners and seeking federal funding to do a lot of these, to do a lot of these actions. Next slide, please. So as HFD mentioned, we're gonna be ready to do a PSS or a Public Safety Power Shutoff as soon as July 1st, but that doesn't mean we'll initiate any PSS alerts. We're just gonna be ready to do so, beginning and heading into the summer and the dry season through the end of the year. These, what's shown here are areas on Oahu that are subject to PSP, PSS alerts in the initial year of our program for this fire season. We're gonna continually update these maps and it's likely that we'll have to, we'll be implementing PSS in other risk areas on the island. We're prioritizing this Leeward Coast, because that's where we're installing a lot of the, the actions that I mentioned earlier in terms of system hardening and safety improvements. So these areas were, where we looked at data with fire experts' history, historic wind data, fuel and vegetation, community and critical infrastructure, egress with Farrington Highway and accessibility issues, as well as the location of our equipment. And so in the meantime, we're also installing what's called sectionalizers. So we're gonna see these areas reduce over time as we're able to sectionalize these circuits here on, in the Leeward Coast. And again, that is being prioritized. Next slide, please. So just a couple of things in mind. This is another handout. And so this is not showing well on this slide, but this is something that's on our website if you're interested in taking a look. You've all heard the notices when the National Weather Service and the Fire Department puts out a red flag warning and fire weather watches. So those are some considerations, but they're not the only data points. When, when the Weather Service issues a red flag warning, they're seeing winds higher than 20 miles per hour. And we're also gonna be in drought or low humidity conditions. We're still gonna be ready in those situations, but 20 mile an hour winds are not likely what are gonna prompt power shutdowns. We're, we're looking more at wind speeds of 40, 45 to 50 miles per hour. And historically, these types of wind conditions are rare during the summer. So we don't want everyone thinking there's gonna be a PSS every time there's a red flag warning. It's gonna be dependent on a number of factors, mostly high wind speeds. So using this data from the Weather Service, we're gonna be coordinating with our government official partners, first responders, like HFD and HPD said earlier tonight, whenever we issue these PSS alerts. And then we're gonna inform our communities through various channels, social media, radio, TV, pretty much every form of communication. And that's what we encourage. If you haven't updated your, your information with your Hawaiian Electric account, phone number, email address, cell phone number, please do so. Those are just additional measures where we can reach and communicate with you. Next slide, please. This is on the back of that handout, and board members all have this as well. This is just to kinda show the sequencing of what a PSS looks like. So what's shown here is when, when these weather alerts occur, we deploy what are known as field observers. And so they will take in real-time assessments from, from the ground in the high-risk areas. And we hope to do this 24 to 48 hours before any potential power shut offs. But all of this depends on weather. And there have been times where these red flag warnings have occurred with very little notice. So we're gonna try and give as much notice as we can based on the weather information that we're receiving. Once a weather threat is ended, we can't immediately turn on power at that time. We have to make sure that there's no poles or lines that have fallen or gone down. Need to make sure that the, the equipment is all intact before we turn the power back on. Otherwise, we risk the potential for sparking an ignition. Again, that's the whole point of, of, of doing this program safely. We're gonna restore power as soon as that equipment inspection has taken place. And, and if there are damages, we're gonna repair them on the spot. Again, this process could take several hours or several days. And the several days would be if there is equipment damage or if the winds are blowing for, at a high speed for a longer duration. Next, next slide, please. Couple more, and then we'll open up for questions. So this is oh, next one, please. So just, just as a reminder again to, to update information in our system, if, if you, especially in the Leeward Coast where, you know, these areas are, we can do it a number of ways. You can call us 548-7808-5487311. Or it's, if you do have mobile phone or internet access, you can go to our website and update the information yourself. And if you do have a mobile device, we have an app, a mobile application. And so if you sign up for alerts, it's something you have to opt in for. But if you sign up for alerts, then you will receive all of those communications that I mentioned as soon as these things happen. So we're gonna encourage that. And we're gonna have a new software tool that we'll have in our fall, August, September timeframe. And that'll also allow for a calling feature where if you want to be notified, we can, we can call you up directly. Unlike a hurricane, there is also the option to go outside of the PSS area. But again, that's all dependent on the, the strength of the wind conditions. Customers with medical needs, we're, we're communicating with them directly and working with emergency service providers, dialysis centers and so forth, that also have backup generation that can provide service in the event of something like this. And this is just the last slide here. Looking ahead, we are looking at refining more targeted and surgical and so that the impact isn't as great. And this is just, again, a, a piece of the broader strategy of reducing wildfire risk in, across again, territories we serve. This is just some resource information on hawaiianelectric.com. I have some copies here if anybody's interested. But again, this information is all available just in getting ready for this, in addition to hurricane season, the same types of actions, what HFD and HPD said with regards to food supply, water supply, and clothing, et cetera. So, and that's all, Chair. I'll turn it back, open, open up for questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, Kurt. Okay, we're opening it for questions. Board members, Board Member Myers, Board Member Corona, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate your presentation, especially after what's been going on with the power outages and the wildfire. I just wanna commend Hiko that, you know, you guys got like big expectations for the community, low tolerance and low patience for, you know, the service because of our devices. We all on Zoom, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I looked through your presentation. I don't know nothing that we can, what you can do because similar to like, other than what you're doing right now with your preventative swallows. I went through this whole thing and I looked at all the different areas that you guys are trying to make sure that you covered ground on that area, considering with your load to get us electricity every day. I was here, I was watching a news report and the lady was saying, why is it gonna be out for so long? You know, by Kapialani Boulevard. We cut into that point that where we expect HPD to risk their lives for us, but as well as make sure you catch the guy who's speeding and you're also catching the guy that's having illegal fireworks. Very high expectations, our community. So I appreciate, because DOT has shared with us how they're trying to cut back on the brush and everything. I don't know how long our community can afford that, to pay for all these things. I look at the mainland and how much their electricity costs compared to what Hiko's charging us. So I really don't know how to balance those expectations, but I just wanted to applaud you guys for your efforts that when the situation happened with Lahaina, you're trying to stop with the bleeding, so to speak. But I really don't know how our community can afford all these different initiatives and keep you guys going. And with the expectation that we still want electricity for our refrigerator, our AC and our devices. So I just wanted to bring that up, that I appreciate you guys. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Board Member Myers. Board Member Corona?
Yeah, thank you. And I think what you provided us tonight was basically what was already all provided online.
Correct.
So one of the items on there, I was trying to look at the map and I was trying to really dial in on the map. And it was hard for me to really dial in on the really affected areas because online is at approximately 2,700 customers. And I know there's a lot more than 2,700 customers on this side of the island. And this is where this program is targeted to. So, and that's why I was trying to dial in on the map. And so I still don't kinda know. I have a general idea, but are you able to expand on, on more specific on that map to hone it down more? So that's kind of my first part of where I'm going here. Then and, and looking at it, I think that I didn't see Farrington Highway impacted at all. So that means the, for safety aspects of it, traffic lights and things like that will still function. Businesses will still have access to power during this, this period. But I'm not, again, I'm not sure because it's hard to dial in on the map. So can you expand on how the customers or what customers and what areas are really affected by this, that 2,700?
Yes, thank you, Board Member Corona. First question, first part of the question is the maps. We currently have our shape files over a stationary or stagnant map. We are working on making it a GIS function so you can zoom in and see it more clearly. To your question about Farrington Highway, it is more the, we, that's where the sectionalizers were installed so that we can keep the traffic lights and Farrington Highway functional. There may be some traffic lights that may be impacted. Another thing is that when there's high wind, it's possible there may be, even if we do a PSS, there may be non-PSS related outages that occur as well. But if it is planned and if there are no other weather-related outages, then we are going to try and keep Farrington Highway energized for the most part, yeah.
I understand. Thank you. And, and I'm just concerned, it's me, July 1st, and so two weeks away. And I don't know if I'm gonna lose power during a PSS. Other members of the community are not aware that they're a part of that 2,700. So for those that were talking about dialysis machines or health-related requirements and safety issues and such, I think that it'd be prudent that, that Hiko, this late in the game, it's coming late in the game to allow the community to be aware of if they're gonna be impacted. And I understand it could other events can cause different power outages, but this is specifically planned event by Hiko that's gonna target specific area and specific homes or properties, et cetera, are gonna be affected. And they don't know who they are because the map is not dialed in yet and it's two weeks away. So I, I guess that's kinda where I'm going here is the community needs to know how they're gonna be impacted, more so those 2,700 customers that you're approximating.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Board Member Augustine?
Thank you. My question is, is it safe when you turn the power back on? Because we did have the power circuits cause our entire Moku to catch fire. And this is the reason for why you folks are doing this power shut off. And so when you say that you're shutting off and then you're gonna turn back on as a protocol and measure, are you gonna be, is it safe for our community? Or is it gonna potentially initiate fires? And are you prepared to put those fires out? What is your process and protocol for that?
Yes, so that good, good question. We will be re-energizing as safely as possible with the inspections will be thorough. We're gonna perform, send multiple crews to perform these inspections. We will be coordinating the restoration with Fire Department as well. But again, to your point, the whole point is to reduce any sparks or ignition that might occur. And at the residential level, that's where things like surge protectors are also important. You know, when power comes back on, just like for a power outage, it can it can sometimes cause surges in the homes. And so that's something that, you know, an additional measure that can be taken in the household.
Okay, very good, board member I O.
I believe you just mentioned it at the end. So I think it's number six on this on this sheet of paper. And you mentioned it. Invest peoples, invest in surge protection equipment. The equipment that was going to protect your computer and anything electronic in your house. I would advise you get one because I lived in a state of Washington. I had a search protector to protect my television, my computer and anything electronic. Because you don't want that stuff to go bunkers and you lose everything due to the resurgence of the power coming back on. So I would, I would say that you guys invest in something like that. Honestly, really do that. You mentioned it this way.
Okay. Okay, very good. Okay, board members, I think we're going to open it up for questions. The community in person, go ahead, line up to the microphone, state your name for the minutes.
Aloha, John Nuputi Travis. Good evening, Chair, Board. My question is, with you folks shutting down power in our area, how does that affect the water pumps that supply the water for firefighters?
I know we have Mayor's rep from Border Water Supply, but just that's something that we are working with Border Water Supply and Honolulu Fire very closely on. I think the main priority for Border Water Supply will be to keep the system pressurized. But from our perspective, we're going to try and provide as much advance notice so that we can coordinate the deployment of generators and other types of resources. The one we were most worried about, just like community, is those ones that come with very little notice. Those usually the stronger wind events do provide that twenty four to forty eight hour notice. So that's where we're going to activate all of our emergency procedures and preparedness with all of the other partnering organizations. But you're absolutely right, that's something that is a major critical service that needs to be planned for in the event of something like this.
Hello, board member Chair Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name Ed Warner. It sounds like Hawaiian Electric is worried about what's happening and they should be. I think the H H L should be worried too in what's you know, we cannot predict the future. But if you go in a valley, it's sitting there. Tomorrow, we get thirty mile an hour winds coming in. I don't know if you guys know about that. So they should be worried. You know, back in twenty sixteen, I think it was March seventeen, when Hawaiian Electric's wire went off. I'm pretty sure planning guys live in homestead, say that. It almost burned down serious seven. I was there. It was terrible. Some other houses got touched, never burned down, but that should have been on rude awakening. Telling you guys, I was there. I took a nine year old at the other house, carried her out. It was terrible. You know, if this was on what you call it, on the opposite side, Kailanis, we could feel the heat coming off that mountain. It wasn't windy, but when I think when rode on was like hurricane king blasting right up into the homestead. Serious seven, it almost burned down and Patty's son lived there. You know, I think Hawaiian Electric should be worried. You know, in what's happening. I mean, we got to be off the mines. Everything surrounding us. I think Colley too, you know, I go in the homestead, I know everybody who cutting the brush back on the homestead, I know everybody. So matter of fact, I just start one company, I think I'm going to start them next month. Grab all these guys, bring them on my team and go see Colley if they didn't have time to cut that back. You guys got to call it, you got to go up in homestead and look the sidewalks, the ranch side is terrible. Our number one thing right now should be, what is the emergency response when something do happen? Hawaiian Electric get on plan, the city get on plan, the state get on plan, Hawaiian Homes get on plan. Does the federal government has a plan? I don't think anybody get any idea what to do. If all kupunas get caught and stuck up in that valley, what going to happen? You know, what I think what going to happen, all you guys should get sued. And that's what happening right now. This is on wake up call to everybody, right? We as homesteaders, I'm a homesteader too, my entire family lives up in that valley. If something would go wrong, I like know who going to come and apologize to me. Because I tell you right now, you're going to get cracks. You're going to get cracks and that's the God shoot. So what is put in front of us is on rude awakening and everybody got to wake up. Number one is find one emergency plan so we can evacuate. Because if not, you get a lot of a surprise Lahaina not throwing blows right now. A surprise. Nanakuli going to throw blows, I can guarantee you that.
Thank you. Boy. John Makapa, Hawaiian Valley Homestead Community Association. I want to mahalo HECO for taking on this Kulianna. It's not an easy thing, but I'm happy that you folks are being proactive in these fires. It did take an unfortunate incident to bring this forward. And I understand HECO is trying to do what they can. Our homestead itself, we are working with fire mitigation. I don't want to wait till it happens. I want our homestead to be ready if and should it happen. And so one of the things that I am concerned about in these cutoffs, shut offs, or whatever you want to call them, is the like dialysis. Yeah, we worry about them, why and I come. And I know that on the flyer, you said that there are resources for facilities like that. My concern is for kupunas at home that may be on an oxygen tank, nebulizer. Some of them don't have generators that they can have that for. We don't know that if this emergency does come and hopefully it never does, that it will be, the electricity will be off for an extended amount of time. If there is a lot of smoke, then of course it's going to hamper the breathing for a lot of people that suffer from asthma. So we want to make sure that we're mindful of that as well. And then with these fires, I found that the hardest thing for our H F D organizations is to communicate. And so if the electricity is off, how are these people going to communicate? How is the fire department going to communicate with the helicopter that might be up in the air? And so maybe one solution might be that we all go back to going back to C B radios, you know? Because God forbid if the internet goes down, we have no way to communicate with anybody else. And being with the civil defense with my parents a long time ago, the C B radios came in handy with these emergency times when nothing else worked. And so they were on the road and they use their C Bs to communicate with each other. So that might be another option. But yeah, so again, our homestead is taking a proactive approach to this. And you know, in the sense of fire mitigation, we're not waiting. We're going to be attending a symposium that the department is hosting. And we're looking at when we're taking a look at fire breaks, we're looking at fiery tarantans plants to so that we don't have to keep going back and cutting the brush fire. So mahalo.
Okay, very good, thank you. Go ahead, up to the microphone, please say your name for the minutes.
Aloha, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Valerie Manoa. I'm a resident here at the Nanakuli Homestead. Mahalo to our electric company for being proactive in keeping our community safe and also informing us of what the plans are. I'm just wondering, as a resident, I want to also be financially prepared. And I'm sorry if this is answered in the brochures. With the people, your employees that go up to scout out to see need to be shut down, is that additional staff from also the people who go out when there's natural disasters? Because when there is like, we're in hurricane season, right, coming up? Or we're in hurricane season, when trees go down or, you know, lines go down, you send out a team of people. Will that be the same team or are they different teams? And with that, will there be additional cost for residents? When you may find out you need more employees to do that? So that's kind of my question.
Good question. And for this public safety power shut off P S P S, we are this is different from the crews that go out during hurricanes. Those are more our field crews operations that are in trucks. The spotters are going to be people that normally aren't activated in emergencies. So there's no addition of existing employees that are going to be trained to go out to have weather devices, visual tools. And in addition to us, we're going to be installing more cameras and weather stations that are stationary as well. So all of those are different data points that we'll be using to make these decisions. But it's a super good question. And real quick, Chair, just wanted to get back to board member Myers' question about cost. It relates to this question in addition to some of the community driven activities that were talked about. We are fortunate to have federal funding and we're applying for more. And that's something that part of that federal funding allows for us to partner with the community. And Chair De Court has been a very helpful partner in helping us understand who to connect with in the communities with regards to areas of of risk, Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization and other partners. And so I know many of you might be a part of H W M O and the fire wise communities. We'd like to work with you in addition to all of this to identify where we can maybe partner, look at native plant reforestation, fire breaks. These are all ways where we can leverage some of the federal funding that's coming in to support these infrastructure upgrades. It can also go towards supporting community driven resilience initiatives as well.
Very good, thank you very much. So last question, go ahead. And then we're going to go ahead and move on to the next presentation.
Aloha, thank you Kurt for coming out. I wanted to invite you on July eighth, the Ahupua on Nanakuli has its community meeting. And I'm going to invite all of you that are here tonight to bring your neighbors, bring your Ohana. If Kurt can be in that meeting to educate our people, our homesteaders about the problem we have, we need to be responsible in bringing our people to the meeting to get this information that he is here tonight sharing with just a few of us. Our concern for this homestead doesn't only belong to Mr. Colley Watson. It belongs to every one of us who are beneficiaries. Right, Mr. Watson? We need to take in educating our community. So when you have a chance, if you can take a look at your calendar, it's a Monday, six P M at Kavai Hona. And I'll contact you, I'll send you an email. On behalf of Ahupua on Nanakuli Homestead, I'd like to invite Hawaiian Electric to come out and educate us. So we cannot say we never know. We have a chance to be educated right from the horse's mouth to hear the details, how, who, when. But it's our responsibility to bring our people together to get the information straight from Hawaiian Electric. So I'll get back to you. Thank you, thank you so much.
Just confirm, I'll be there for that meeting. And if anybody is interested next week, Thursday at Mahili Learning Center, we're also going to be having a meeting with H P D, H F D, same partners you heard from tonight and Haime as well, and just to answer questions and share preparedness information.
Great, thank you, go ahead. Last question.
Question, sorry.
Right now, we had to find out about cutting the overhang to the power line. Hawaiian Electric called back and say called the D O T, Department of Transportation, they cut trees. They called back. You folks bit it out. So now we got a company coming in here cutting the trees. So in the morning, every morning, we call the captain at the fire station. Cap, what's the wind? What flag we flying to there? Zero. Call my cousin, we can go Tahiti and come back. Paddles up, let's sell. So that's the thing, I'm off the grid. Off the grid. So when they come by, they know, oh uncle, you're off the grid. I said, yeah. So right now, you're on big sale at Costco's for generators. Why P O went out last week? One day, came on the next day. Come on the next week. That's what he cannot promise us. What Hawaiian Electric? So now, uncle, he was at the water. They did a repair on one hydrant, but they left the old hydrant. I'm going to get the hydrant, take them home. But tonight, I think I'm going to open all the hydrants in the valley. See if you get water. Is it run by solar or run by electric? Don't have generator in case that thing go off. We have, yeah, see? Are we ready? Thank you.
Thank you, very good. We'll get that information out of from you. If you can send us that information that you're going to be having, we'll get it to the board, we'll get it out our community. We're going to, we're going to move on, we're going to move on to the next presentation. Oh, go ahead.
Six P M is the next week, Thursday's meeting, Mahili Learning Center. And open house from six to seven and seven o'clock, same style like this, presentation, talk story.
Great, perfect, very good. Okay, Kurt will have his information. If you guys have any other questions, you can contact him directly. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next agenda item. Item E, Department of Hawaiian Homelands. We have Chairman Colley Watson here with us. We do have your presentation that we're going to be pulling up. Again, Hawaiian Electric, I just wanted to thank you very much. Sorry if I can ask everybody to be quiet in the room. Thank you so much, thank you. Wine Electric, we appreciate you for coming down. Thank you for bringing your team, thank you for being in person and thank you for a thorough presentation. We look forward to seeing you. Very good, go ahead, Chair Watson, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thank you for inviting me tonight, Chair, Madam Chair, as well as members of the neighborhood board, including the public. I'd kind of like to start off by actually responding to this concern about the fires. We are going to have a symposium on August twenty third. It's going to be at the airport, the Enoy's Boardroom. And so that we're inviting all the different key partners. And we're looking for solutions, including from members of the various communities to participate. And so that's going to be on August twenty third. Okay, with respect to update regarding our program at the H H L, let me start the next, next slide. As we all know, the program was started by Prince Jonah Kuhiho Kalani Anole over a hundred years ago. And as we all know, the program has been marginally and actually to major extent a failure. And so over the hundred years that we've been in existence, very few homesteads were built. And so as a result of that, we have maybe ten thousand, a little over ten thousand homesteads throughout the state. But we have over twenty nine, or close to twenty nine thousand on our waiting list. Fortunately, in twenty twenty two, the legislature passed Act two seventy nine, signed into law, then made available, next slide, six hundred million dollars. And so we kind of use that funds. I was asked by the governor to come on board as a developer with that type of background. The we put together various projects. But we also, besides trying to do the vertical construction, we're also trying to, we're trying to address the situation with the people on our waiting list. And so as a result of that, not only do we have to prepare the individuals for homeownership, but in many cases, we have to deal with borderline, if not homeless, individuals. One of our attempts, and this is a pilot project that's been in the making for several years, is Uluke Kukui redevelopment of an existing facility involving about eighty units. We're expanding and making them a little bit larger and converting them to affordable, forty affordable rental units. It's five different buildings, eight complexes. We also developing a multi-service center to address the needs for counseling as well as services that can prepare people that are coming off our waitlist for homeownership. And so the developer has secured its funding, which took quite an effort. But H H F T C has provided funding. We're using some of the Nahaza funds that we get from the federal government, amounting to a little over fourteen million dollars to do the renovation of this particular project. Permits should probably be issued and construction starting. Permits should probably be issued and construction starting, the beginning of, or the end part of this year with the construction and renovation hopefully being completed by the end of next year, where people can start moving in. Next slide. One of the other is update, another update. And again, trying to address the people on our waiting list as well as our beneficiaries is we're also exploring, exploring the idea of kupuna housing as well as respite housing. So we have about ten different projects throughout the state that we're looking at. As an example, this one out in Wainai, next to the Wainai Camp Comprehensive Health Center, involves a, not only kupuna housing, but also respite housing. We work with Lululelo Homes and we anticipate approximately forty units with respect to the kupuna housing and also a three story, about forty thousand square feet of respite care facility. In addition to that, it's part of a master plan that Wainai Camp is moving, moving forward on. And in addition to what we're doing, they are looking to expand their facilities to put in a teaching health center, a food and social services campus, along with a seminar college, food warehouse, social service and food campus, as well as a food distribution. As you heard, on the other side, on Carrenton Highway, the Wainai Valley Homestead Community Association is doing a P V projects along with the crematorium, which the commission recently approved, the issuance of a long term lease. Next slide. Okay, one of our major projects that, to address the waiting list is to kind of get, again, creative in the kind of products we produce at the department. So we're looking on East Kapoleh Parcel two A, which is on the bottom Makai side of this Kaulu Okaheim, mass developed land area in which we anticipate putting in about three hundred various types of multifamily homesteads using low income housing tax credits. We're also doing a kupuna housing as well as a transitional. And we're also looking at doing a little bit of commercial enterprise, making it available to the homesteaders to participate in. So we've set aside about a million dollars to do this initial planning. Next slide. One of the things that, as a developer, we, we tried to change the approach in development. So rather than doing a piecemeal, we put in the infrastructure and then do the vertical construction. What, what I've done is kind of consolidated the four different parcels, C, D, E and F, and collectively awarded out to developer. We've already started the construction on unit two C and with wine dredging. And we've identified and have chosen a developer with Gentry. And so they anticipated total production of single family homes. We're looking at about six hundred seventy units. Part of the six hundred, six hundred million that we received, we've allocated about a hundred forty million of that to develop the first phase of four hundred twenty single family residential units. Unit two F, which involves about two hundred fifty. We're going after federal funding, amounting to about sixty million. If we're successful, then that phase will be included and is part of the developer agreement with Gentry. Next slide. One of the other things that we're also doing is looking for other sites. We did acquire a site from H H F T C next to the Kapoleh High School. And so we're looking to do about sixty family homes and start construction hopefully next year. And again, in this one, we're using the low income housing tax credits as a funding source in, in order to address the people that we typically bypass on our waiting list, which are the low income, sixty percent A M I and below. Next slide. What I'd like to do now is call up, call up Ori Liao to explain. One of the other things that we're looking to do is get the community involved in the legislative process. And so I have Ori explain that.
Just a little shorter than Chair. Aloha mai kaku, vau Oriana Liao, and I serve at D J Jaz, the Nahaza Government Relations Program Specialist. And that's just a long title that means that I advocate and track federal, state and county legislation with a really awesome team. I'm here tonight to share with you all that we are going to be soliciting legislative proposals. The way in which you can get involved is by going to our website at D H H L dot Hawaii dot gov slash government dash relations. Proposals must of course propose a benefit or advantage for the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, the Trust and the beneficiaries of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. Now, when are these due? July thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. After that, I have the kuliana of drafting legislative proposals to propose to the commission. Later in September, I am meant to gain approval from the commission. Afterwards, that commission approved package is reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, Budget and Finance, and the Governor and the Governor's Policy Team. And then by January, we're at the State Capitol. And I look forward to hearing some of your testimonies when we get there. If you have any questions, I'll be available later. So thank you.
Yeah, one of the other things that we're doing is we're upgrading our website. So I'd like to call up our Diamond Badajos that will talk about the, our upgrades for our website.
Also a little shorter here. So aloha mai kaku, aloha aiai o Diamond Badajos Ko'inoa. I am the Department's Information and Community Relations Officer. And I guess that's a fancy way of saying that I get to engage with all of you online and in person. So the website that Ori mentioned, D H H L dot Hawaii dot gov, that does fall under my division's kuliana. And one of the important things for us to you is that it's a resource. So one thing that we try to put on there is our successorship packets, applications, anything that you might need to start the process of becoming a beneficiary. So you can definitely go and look on there. We try to keep it up to date. It's also another way that you can find our contact information and any media releases, meetings, or any upcoming press that we've done or will be doing. And I think one thing that'll be important going on in the future is we're working on a series of informational videos. So those will live in perpetuity for anybody looking to get information on the department, learn a little bit more. How to do your successorship, how to fill out your application, a little bit about the Nahaza program. It'll be a little bit about our land development division. So that's something to definitely keep an eye out and check out in the future. And then one more thing that we are definitely ramping up, that would be our current projects website. And there you can learn a little bit about each project on every island. And you can navigate that. You can learn about how many units in each project and what communities they'll be built in and how that all plays into Act two seven nine and how it's really, you know, money and funding in movement right now. So thank you for that opportunity and like Ori, I'll definitely be available towards the end to share my contact information with anybody who needs to have it. So mahalo.
Okay, very good. Board members' questions, Board Member Myers. Okay, go ahead, Board Member Myers and Board Member Hector.
Thank you, Chair. I have three questions and I'll make it real fast. The first one is related to the budget, H one. I missed today, yesterday's meeting. Did H one get approved for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty five budget?
Yes, it did.
It got approved by the board? Okay, yesterday. Okay, so I think that takes care of question number two. Number three was Act two seven nine. I know you shared some of updates that I didn't see before. But are you able to start putting on the agenda again for Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting monthly, like I saw with Stuart from two thousand and twenty two, for each month to have Act two seven nine updates at the Hawaiian Homes Commission meetings?
Yeah, usually what we're doing is updating the projects as they come on board. We have twenty something projects. So the focus has been on moving them all forward. We needed to encumber the six hundred million by the June thirtieth of this year. Fortunately, we were able to get an extension. So we're anticipating encumbering about all of it by that initial date. We're going to have about a hundred twenty nine million left over that will allow, we'll have a couple more years to encumber that. We have quite a few projects. Process of being either a purchase of new lands or a situation where issuing a developer agreement where we have the developer take the lead on not only building the infrastructure, but also working with the homesteaders to identify which category they fall into, whether it's a turnkey, whether it's a light tech with option to purchase, or working with Habitat for Humanity, or they're going to just receive a finished lot, lot, which again, build their own home. So there's a collection of, and we hope to do at least maybe six thousand homesteads by the time I leave this particular job. Hopefully, we'll expand that to also include kupuna housing. We're also looking to do transitional housing. We're also looking to do very, very, become very, very active in our industrial and commercial lands. Also being very, very supportive of the community, homestead associations, just like the Nanakuli, or excuse me, the Wainai Valley Homestead Association. The involvement with the homestead associations and their developments is very, very important. Because part of the objective of the Prince Kuhiyo was to get and empower our beneficiaries to get into commercial and as well as start to work with the different elite trusts. So there's just a variety of things going on at the department and it's an exciting time. We're, our website will provide a lot of the information. But we also have community meetings. Our homestead, our commission meetings on a monthly basis are open to the beneficiaries as well as the public. They want to participate either on the J agenda. We just sit and listen as to the different things that are coming down.
So does that mean yes, that you're going to have an update on a monthly basis?
It's on a, you know.
Because when we had the pig and the pig had approved, the commission had approved the revisions.
Yeah, those have already been.
At the beginning of this year. But that was with this whole worksheet on one point two billion. But Act two seven nine is just six hundred million. So I just wanted to continue to track it as I've been doing from two thousand and twenty two. So is that going to be a monthly thing?
Well, you can look at our website. All of that information is on the website. All the different projects we have, they are linked to the different developers as well as give an explanation as to the status.
I'll check with I T then about that update. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Aloha. In your projects that you highlighted, and there were companies that did some bids and the monies that the department will spend down. The deadline is in a year as the government has given the D H H L. Will they take it back if it's not used? Or do you have to at least show whether it's being invested? Money that could accrue where the department will definitely show some revenues in the process of doing this spend down. And if it's not really the companies that are being used and back to the fire, killing the fires by cutting trees. I think there are some of us that do diligently are. I mean, but my husband cut them and I'm dragging trees. I'm like, I did my branch. But where the power line is, I told him not to touch it because I'm just afraid that he's, he just might either slip. Or if that thing touched the huge power line, that's it. So somebody said they advocate for things. Does the department or Ahupua can tell us there is like maybe Brother Edgar, make your company? But I was just afraid. And I told him, don't get near it. So all this spend down, can I ask for money to cut the tree? The people like charge me ten thousand, forget it. That's ridiculous.
On the emergency, emergency type situations, we have been spending trust funds to address immediate concerns. We did go into the legislature this past session. We got authorization for twenty million, authorization to go after federal funding. We're working with our congressional delegation. Jill Takuta, Representative, has a set aside of about one point two million as a start. We're also going to go back into the legislature again. It is a priority for us. So not only with our congressional delegation, but also with our legislative delegation that we are going to continue to go after funding. And that's, you know, part of the process involves putting together plans. And that's why our symposium, August twenty third, is part of the process along with going after funds. August twenty third at the International Airport. You can take a look at, or you can talk with our Diamond over here, get you the details. But it's also on our website.
Okay, Board Members, any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and open it up to community, Board Member Corona. Then we'll open it up to community. Community, please line up if you would like to answer.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. I remember the project in Mahili, the two hundred plus home project where the E I S was already up. And then I had heard that the project was canceled. And I was just curious why that two hundred plus home, but I'm aware of that it was postponed or canceled. Deferred. Is it, is it deferred until further notice or is it? Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
I forgot something.
Go ahead.
Bruce could not remain here, but he asked me the neighbors that's on Kauai. How does he, you know, start with the trees hanging over, bogan villas in his yard? And then how do you deal with the situation other than H P D? When there's people possibly doing illegal things and children crying and it's, there's a constant complaint to the P D. So without a association other than Ahupua, which I'm glad because people do have a voice now. I have this that he left. So if I can give it to you.
Yes, definitely. We have beefed up our enforcement division. And we've just brought, brought on one more. And then we've been very active in the community. And we are entering into M O As with the police department from the various counties. And we've kind of taken a lot more aggressive approach whereby we actually in situations where it's an abandoned house, we go in, there's trespassers, we'll give them notice. We'll board up the facilities. And I think the department has kind of turned it around to a certain extent with, with the aggressive approach. We're going after not only trespassers, but also some of the homeless that are, you know, are kind of making the neighborhood not as attractive. We're going after the, you know, as well as drug houses. And so I, hopefully you'll notice that, I think in Nanakuli, we've had a couple incidents where we've gone in. We've chased away individuals that are trying to set up gaming house. We boarded up houses that and chased out the individuals that were doing drugs. And then we're also being active with the homestead associations and getting input and guidance as well as whatever complaints, if there's complaints, do provide it to us and we definitely will take action.
Okay, very good. We'll open it up for community. Go ahead to the microphone, please.
Hello, Chair. So I guess my, my comment more is that I ask you, Chair, and the department not to forget about the two hundred families that we're supposed to be building for Maoka of Uluke Kukui. I'd still like to see that happen. Maybe legislation can push for funding for infrastructure on that. Also, there's, I know that there's a whole bunch of projects that you folks are doing since you've come on board. Some of them we agree with, some of them we don't agree with. And we do come to voice our opinions at these commission meetings. And so I just wanted to, to yes, we can agree to disagree, but we also want to make sure that our people are represented and that you are working diligently to get our homesteaders off the list. Sometimes we may not agree with the, the. Not the housing, not the single-family dwelling housing, but the other housings where, you know, there are multi-family dwellings and so on and so forth. So, but thank you for everything that you do. And we hope that you just don't forget about that 200 families in Maile. I'd love to see that be built up and infrastructure put in and homes built for our Kanaka wanting the Wainai.
Okay, very good. All right, up next.
Thank you. Aloha Kako. As a former commissioner of DHHL, I had the privilege of serving four years. And when you talk about Act 279, this board and this community should be able to ask these questions. What projects do we have on the Wainai coasts? During 2022, Chair Ayla and as I served on the commission, the commission had support the Miley development, our old Voice of America property, to have 147 homes there with three beneficiary consultations of agreeing that we're gonna have homes here. So my question is when Chairman Watson, you came in and Act 279 was diverted. Wainai coasts today don't have any projects from Act 279, from the 600 mil. So these are the questions that you should be able to ask as homesteaders of residents. Where are our projects that are happening here? Every island from DHHL has projects from Maui to Molokai to Kahulu Okalai to Kapale. But that property, as you are familiar with the Voice of America, it was cleaned out by council member Tupola of all the ordinance, the Navy ordinance that was there to prepare us for DHHL to take those homes. So I stand here today in my Aho Pohaw. It's very painful that we don't have projects because, Kali, you have a lot of projects in here that we supported. The Miley Makana, Nanakuli, Nanakuli village. And so I would think that as a chairman, you would support having, using Act 279 from the 600 mil to bring us some homes here so that we could house our beneficiaries and people that are on the waitlist that wants to get into homes. So that was one of my concerns that I wanted to bring up and I'm glad that you're here. Thank you. I know you have a long day and everything. And the other concern I wanted to bring up is on Nahaza funds. Nahaza funds, ladies and gentlemen, pay attention. Go on their website and read about Nahaza funds. Why and what we can use for Nahaza funds? Rehabilitation. That's part of the funding that they're gonna use for Ulukuekukui. I'm gonna share a story and Cynthia, I'm glad you're here because you're Miss Nahaza in DHHL. If you know in Farrington Highway beneficiaries, Auntie Pearl's house, the Lewis family, correct? Baba, Fat Girl. I should have brought pictures here because they were trying to apply for Nahaza funds, Kali. Auntie Pearl passed away, their application died. She went back, the kids went back. Their house is so decapitated and the Baba is on a wheelchair, cannot, the stairs, they don't have stairs. Their home is so broken up that when I went there to visit, I was literally in tears to see that he was detained in his house because he doesn't have stairs. This is what Nahaza funds should do, is to help native Hawaiians to use to rehabilitate their homes. Don't you agree? Amen. And so this, you know, we have families in our Aho Pohaw that are disability and don't have the ability of funds. And this is where we need your help, Kali. That how we can help our people who are, some of them are disabled, that needs funding to help rehabilitate their homes. That's what Nahaza funds are for, not just for your development projects. It's supposed to be to help native Hawaiians to rehabilitate their homes, to live better, to live safer, so they can get in and out of their homes. So I had helped them and I need to tell you this, Mr. Chairman, because the family called your department and this is what they told her. You have to fill up an application, two applications, one for Baba, one for Fat Girl. Okay, she said, okay, we'll get it done, help me with it. And then she called back for the applications because it took a week. She didn't hear anything or get anything. She called today and they said, we have to do an assessment. The assessment will take between six months to one year to assess their property. And after we do the assessment, then they fill up the application. I don't understand why we have to have families and native Hawaiians go through this. Why do we do this? This is not your money, this is not the department's money. It is for the native Hawaiians, for beneficiaries. So I'm just asking and pleading to you to please take a look at the Nahaza fund program and make it a little easier for our kupunas and people that need the help to help to get rehabilitation, to help them get their homes fixed. So if you want to take a look, I have pictures, I can send it to you, Mr. Watson. And it is Auntie Pearl's house on Farrington Highway. And you only have two people living in there and they can't even get in and out because they have no stairs and they're on a wheelchair. So I really wanted to bring this up because it touches my heart and to see our people go through this kind of ordeal when we have funding. We have funding, let's use the funding to help our native Hawaiian people. So thank you so much for your time, Kali. Aloha.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Would you like to respond?
Yeah, if I can respond. Yeah, we definitely are interested in helping the individuals you mentioned. Regarding our Nahaza funds, as a result of the initiative of the department, we were able to from 2 million to 22.3 million for the last three years. So close to over 66 million versus what we're receiving previously. So there's a variety of uses for those funds, including what she's talking about rehabilitation of existing. We're also using the funds to provide rental subsidies for kupuna. We're using the money to provide rental subsidies for displaced individuals from the Maui fire. We're also using the funds to provide zero interest loans to people that participate in Habitat for Humanity. We're also using it to put in infrastructure so we can do the vertical construction. We're also leveraging the funds to put in, you know, the rent to own so that we can qualify and be addressing those that would otherwise fail to become homeowners. So there's a variety of uses of the funds that we're not only expanding the uses, but using the funds in a very effective way. But more importantly, we're showing the feds that we can use and spend the funds. You know, prior to administration, we lost about 40 million in Nahaza funds because we didn't have projects. We've now reversed that. We've now been able to increase the funding to do the kind of projects she's talking about. But more than that, you know, it's so across the board, we're using the funds in the most, I think, beneficial, but in a way that is showing the feds that we can actually use the funds. So with respect to the Nahaza, we do have expanded staff. We're gonna be very, very aggressive, not only going after more Nahaza funds, but other funds from the EPA, the DOT, you know, just HUD and various other sources. So it's an exciting time for the department. We've got a lot of projects going on. So, you know, while we need to serve those that are in desperate need for assistance, which we will do. But we're also excited about the staff that we're bringing on. And as you can find out by going to our website, you'll see that we've been, are being very, very active in moving the program along. And let me also add that we're not just doing vertical construction. Now, with respect to the homeless situation, you know, we're looking at a site in Nanakuli, we're working with Tasukadinas to provide some assistance to the homeless. So we have some additional funds that we're making available to him to clear out an area so that he can set up some programs that will assist. We're being very active in providing opportunities for accessory dwelling units, which our existing homesteaders can put on their existing homesteads. This will provide a rental unit for those that are borderline homeless. We're gonna be very active on that. Also providing rental subsidies from Nahaza for those that are borderline homeless. So there's a variety of things that are happening with the department. I'd also add that with some of the lands that are unused, that have been sitting and have not been actively used to generate income for the program, we're also doing that. We have a 140-acre site in Kalailoa that we just put out a notice that we might turn into a raceway park to generate not only opportunities for our business individuals, but also revenue for the program. We have a 43-acre industrial site that we're also developing. We have a site, a two-and-a-half acre site next to the fire department station in Kapale that we're putting out. The, there's a homestead communities that are interested in going after that. So this, and that's just in this area. Across the state, we're doing a lot more activities. So it's an exciting time for the department, not just regarding housing, but a whole bunch, a whole bunch of other things that address programs' needs. And more importantly, gives opportunities to the beneficiary.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead and go to community for a question. I'll probably take one other question after community if you want to line up and then we're gonna move on.
It again, oh, this bagatay. It's a kid, dynamite coming small package. Hey, Kali, thank you for being here. Welcome, I like to rock things. For, you know, I'm out for a house in Kapale. So, I mean, you know, when, when we get accepted for heaven house, would we be able to work with the contractors in trying to do things that, you know, if we come in there and the house that we're getting, it's like something else. Would that be able, would we be able to work with the contractor? Okay, that's good. Thank you, Buck. You know, you know, sometimes I come out hard, but hey, it's good to talk to the horse's head, not the ass. That's what, that's what it's all about. You know. Oh, that's just the way I am. But you know, there's a lot of like what Patty was saying. Auntie Pearl is my auntie, you know. Who was, came into Nanakuli. You know, I found out we came into Nanakuli in 1928. I thought it was the 30s. Until we had that, at Alaliki and one of my aunties came up and kind of addressed. But. You know, in order for us to get our people on the list on a homestead, we gotta make our area safe, right? How can we get people dying on our roads? How can they even get on the list? You know, like I addressed you about Second Road, my family live on Second Road too. That houses came down, right? My family and other people live all on Second Road, never actually. And you guys know that you guys was getting bucked back when you guys were trying to do them, right? And all, all they asking is put up some speed bumps. I may have to take the first road on now then put them in Second Road? Maybe, but that's all we asking, Kali, is implement the, the speed bumps on Second Road. Better need on 4th Road. Now, we can't wait to people dying. You know, I like to know, when we work with the state to put in the rays down, the speed bumps up in the valley, they were gonna continue and finish them on the bottom. But apparently Hawaiian homes said, no, they got them. So Stuart Mitsunaga is with land. I called him, so who's, who's in charge now? Yeah, there's. Yeah, we could have him here so we can address them. You know, Haleakali and Nanakuli have, I get pictures, cars running into the yard. People died over there by the church. You know, when, when the state, I, I just kind of see why the state couldn't finish them and why DHHL said, no, they got them. So I try to say that, hey, can we let the city maintain our roads? That would be helping you. I'm not saying to own the roads. I brought this up many a times. Let the city maintain the roads up there, cut the sidewalks and everything. You know, we had a meeting with DHHL and I guess, what was his name? I guess he had on wedding photo too and we bought HFD, DRS, the city, the state. And we was trying to bring the concerns about our valley, Kali. And I'm pretty sure you heard him. Yeah, I wasn't too, one fan of Richard, the way he was talking. Because I get that same attitude too, I can bring them. But the part about that is, is we went there for bring one safety.
Okay.
Saving lives.
We're gonna move on, we're gonna move on. Kali, did you have a response?
Yeah. All I mean, remember, safety is the number one. We can't get our kids on white city, they die in the valley. Right?
It's one way. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take the last question and then we'll move on to our next presenter. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Warren Houli. My family lived here a long time. Anyway, my concern is about all the kupunas and all the handicapped people. You know. We need to heal. So, you know, we need therapy and therapy is the ocean. And we need something for all these people that cannot go to the beach. And we don't know any right away. So, you know, I, I was thinking, you know, to help all these, all these people get well and to enjoy life to the fullest. We need to make something for the people, the kupunas and all these handicapped people. We need to make more exit for them. So like, guys like me, I just broke my back, broke one of my ribs. I was in hospital three months. I just came back and thank you Jesus for healing me. And I just was thinking because when I was in, in the hospital, I was thinking about this because I used to take my uncle and always wanted to bring him down the beach for healing because that's the healing for us. And, you know, without this exit to, to the ocean, we cannot be healed and we cannot do nothing. Me, as a surfer, I, I walk, I go down subland. I walk all the way in the water, all the way to the lifeguard stand. And, and, and look at me. I'm, I'm good. I cannot leave, do anything group, group. But for being hurt on January 18th on a boat accident, I flew up in air, I came back, broke my back, I couldn't do nothing, three months. I'm a back like eating like this. But, you know, I trust in God. And, you know, that's the only way besides talking to you guys and try make things work. And, you know, we gotta take care of kupunas and we take care of handicapped things because, you know, they need the exit and they need the right away. And you know what? They let go, but they cannot because, you know, like me, I work them because I, I like the beach. And, you know, look at me today. And, you know, if we can have like on right away to, to the ocean, you know, this will be safe so they can at least go to the sand and they can walk or crawl or whatever. I used to make my friend crawl and the guys used to get mad at me and tell me, you know what? That's therapy, you know what I mean?
Okay.
Get them all like today.
Uncle, I can have you just wrap up your, your comments.
Okay. I have something to say, you know, just.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. No, 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 we gotta move on. We've already spent 40 minutes on this presentation. So, so we're gonna move on, but you can talk to Kali offline or in the back. But Kali, really quick, before we wrap up this section, do you have a response to Patty's question with regards to building homes in our Wainai Moku with Voice of America? I know you kind of touched upon Nahaza, but do you have a response to that? And then we'll move on.
Yeah, we did an analysis of that particular site and it's kind of depressed and would cost a lot of money to elevate as well as to address the issue we got in the source connection. And so it was decided that we have other projects that are more, a lot readier, that would be a lot more costly effective. One of the things that we are, we did when we initially looked at the strategic plan involving the 20-something new project, we tried to figure out, and this was vetted by the commission. We also put out RFPs to identify parcels that would make more sense to develop. And so in that process, this particular site, because of the costs involved, this didn't make sense. So we deferred that subject to additional funding being made available. But we do have other projects and, you know, in the near future, we're looking to announce some additional lands on Oahu that I think a lot of people will be pleasantly surprised.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much, Kali, for being with us in person. Thank you very much to your team for coming. Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much, Kali, for being with us in person. Thank you very much to your team for coming with us in person. If anybody has any questions, you can go ahead and ask Kali. I apologize to cut it short. He'll be outside for a few minutes, so, uh, please go ahead. Uh, next up in our agenda, we have, uh, Nana Ikeola, uh, self-help housing project. Uh, thank you so much, uh, Claudia. Oh. Oh, there she is. Okay, sorry. I apologize. I'm not sure if you're on the continent or you're actually in Hawaii, so, uh, thank you very much for, um, for standing by. Uh, but go ahead. You can unmute yourself and go through. We have your presentation available.
Aloha, Chair of the Court and members of the Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board. My name is Claudia Sham, the founder and the executive director of the Self-Help Housing Corporation of Hawaii. We're developing a twelve acre parcel of land in Nanakuli. We're gonna be building an eighty-seven lot, eight Nanakiola self-help housing project. And after the subdivision is built, we're gonna provide technical assistance to eighty-seven very low and low income families to build their own houses through the team self-help housing method. The site is already zoned R five. It has water and wastewater capacity. When we went in to, uh, get exemptions through the chapter two oh one H, uh, process, we got eleven exemptions from the Honolulu City Council saving seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, which will accrue to the people that will build their houses. And, uh, we've already raised the, uh, twenty million dollars for the project. That's the cost of all of the infrastructure for the project. We have been, um, part, oh, part of also the, uh, process of the exemptions in the two oh one H. We were able to get instead of seventy-two lots, which, which would have been the maximum that you could get. We're able to get, um, eighty-seven lots. So the chapter two oh one H process is quite worthwhile. We've been routing our preliminary subdivision map since, uh, January twenty twenty-three to federal, state and county agencies. We're still providing feedback to these agencies. The main challenges that we've had, um, is the repurposing of the bridge and also repurposing a road remnant. And, uh, we're getting some headway on this and hopefully this will be completed, um, in July. Uh, we were also able to attain a one million dollar HUD grant for the infrastructure. So this will help write down the costs of the project. Um, the families, after we build the subdivision, the families will build one and two-story, three and four-bedroom homes similar to the houses in the Maile self-help housing and Pokai Bay self-help housing project. Those are gonna be three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars fee simple. And they, uh, appraise it seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we're hoping that the preliminary subdivision map will be approved by July with the construction of the infrastructure starting by the end of the year. Residential construction will not, uh, take place until probably March twenty twenty-six. Uh, so currently, in addition to the development track, we are providing pre-purchase financial counseling to the three thousand families on our waiting list. So that by the time that we're ready for residential construction, families will be ready to start, uh, construction. Uh, this will be our sixty-first project. We've already assisted seven hundred and fifty-four families on Oahu Kua Maui and Mulakaiti to build their own houses. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Go ahead, Board Member Myers.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions. Number one, um, how many families did you say? I missed that amount. How many families?
Well, that's the thing that's happening right now is we, we, the preliminary subdivision map is eighty-seven lots. However, um, when we route the preliminary subdivision map through city agencies, uh, it can change the size of the map because you're, um, uh, for example, one of the questions was the widening of the, of the roads. It was gonna be forty-four, fifty-six foot wide. So at this point, it could be an eighty-six lot subdivision or a ninety lot subdivision. So it's gonna be between, between eighty-six to ninety lots for all for very low and low income families.
I'm familiar with your projects, so I appreciate what you're offering to the community with, you know, with save money and to be able to get a home.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yes. My last question, and because I really want other people to have an opportunity to ask questions looking at the time. Um, what, how are people gonna be able to enter and exit your property? The only two ways that I can see is Lululei Naval. So do you have that road? Um, I mean, do you have approval to access, use Lululei Naval? And the second one is, I only could see the Wainai, um, emergency access road, but that's a emergency access road. So can you give us an idea of how entering and exiting, um, the development?
Yes, we're going over the bridge, the pedestrian bridge. We're going to, uh, rehabilitate that bridge. So it's gonna be ingress and egress out of the Nanakiola Bridge.
I don't know where that bridge is. Is that gonna end up on?
It's at the end of Nanakiola Street.
Nana Ikeola.
At the very, Nanakiola Street, at the very end, there's a bridge there. It's all covered with gravel and grass. There's actually a bridge there.
Oh, and it's gonna go into Haleluah so that you can get to the?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with Haleluah. It's going to go right into our subdivision.
Oh, okay. But how are you gonna get to Farrington Highway?
Farrington Highway, out the bridge and down Nanakiola Street.
Oh, okay. I guess I need to see, I guess I need to see a visual when you come back.
Yeah. I didn't bring the map because again, it's preliminary, but you know, the very end of Nanakiola Street. Okay. Jimmy Aki actually put a bridge in, okay, years ago. But right now it's covered over with grass and people walk across it. That is going to be a vehicular bridge. And that's why I got the million dollars from the U.S. Department of HUD in case we have to replace the bridge, but we're actually going to be renovating the bridge.
Okay, mahalo. I defer to others.
Yeah, good. Thank you, Board Member Myers. Uh, Board Member Corona?
Yes, yes, Claudia. Thank you for being here. David Corona. Um, and I'm sorry, I, I missed a very far part of your brief, so if I, if I duplicate here, please stop me. And then I'll get offline with the rest of the board to get the answer. But, um, have you been communicating with the developer who was planning on developing, uh, right next to you? Yes. And have you, and, and, and that access that, that Board Member Myers was talking about, um, I believe that they wanted to open that whole entire road up, so I believe that would traverse through your development project. So two, kind of two questions. Have you been working with the developer who wants to develop next to you? And then transportation wise, are you able to, are you working on that access road? Uh, egress or in, in and out through your property?
Well, the ingress and egress over the bridge, that bridge is gonna be dedicated to the city and county of Honolulu. So after we improve it, it's gonna be, you know, accessible to the public. And in terms of, um, you know, the, the owner adjacent to us is at a preliminary stage. So I'm in no type of partnership with that person at all. But, um, you know, obviously, whatever infrastructure I install is, was going to be publicly dedicated to the city and county of Honolulu. I mean, there's also a road remnant. It's between his lot and my lot. And I'm in the purpose of repurposing that road remnant. I'm gonna build it out to forty-four foot wide wide road. It's gonna be dedicated to the public and that is going to be the outer loop of our road network in the subdivision. But again, it's a public road. So, you know, that's.
Thank you very much. I've seen your update, uh, that I've, I've seen. I, I appreciate it. I hope to continue to see those updates as you go forward and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Headboard Member Tector?
Hi, um, my question would be, uh, you mentioned numbers, three hundred and ninety-five thousand uh, for the homes appraised at seven hundred and twenty-five. Would the applicants or residents be entering the home at that three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars or it's a range?
No. The three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is for the house and the lot. Because in my projects, the family builds the house themselves. So they're gonna be doing the, all of the framing, all of the roofing, all of the siding, hanging doors, windows, painting, everything. They do eighty-five percent of the labor. So a house that they, house and lot that they get for three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars actually appraises at seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because their sweat equity or the two thousand hours that they put in to build the house because it'll probably take about two thousand hours and take about a year and a year and a half to build with the rest of the team members. Then that is what it will be worth, but it'll only cost them three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Okay, very good. Uh, we'll open it up to community for questions. Go ahead.
Thank you. Aloha, Claudia. This is Patty Tribuya. How are you?
Hi, Patty. Nice to see you.
Good. And then wanted to let you know Cynthia is here in the audience too.
Awesome. Hi, Cynthia.
We've worked with Claudia, I think maybe over eight to ten years on this project.
I think so.
I, I think it's taken so long.
Yeah.
You know, I come in you on your Pokai Bay. She had the self-help Pokai Bay project and the Maile project on self-help. So, um, I wanted to, and I, I know you, you explained that it's gonna be ready by July two thousand twenty-six, correct?
Well, we're gonna start, we're gonna start residential construction probably March twenty twenty-six. We're gonna start the infrastructure, I hope, by the end of this year. That'll be about nine months. Then I have to get final subdivision approval, then we can. But we'll be packaging the loans for the families during that time so that.
Good to hear, good to hear.
Yeah, once the infrastructure is power, we'll have the eight teams of families ready to go.
And good to hear because I know that we in the past and the board supported this project moving forward. I just want, I just wanted to let you know if you could inform the families that are waiting. I, I receive emails and stuff and they just don't know what's going on with this upcoming project. And if you could, just let them know those that are waiting, that are on the list, that are qualified, that the project is moving forward. You're looking at this, this, this date. So that way you can assure them that they are gonna be looking forward to, um, on that program project.
Right.
And thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Community, any other questions? If not, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Okay, very good. Claudia, thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate your time. And as you continue to keep the families updated, if you wouldn't mind updating, uh, including our board in that update as well. And of course, if there's anything that we can help you, uh, you have Chair Corona's information, uh, for the housing committee as well.
Okay, mahalo.
Okay, very good. All right, board, um, we are going to hold on one second. I apologize. Let me just go out of order for a second, uh, to make sure that we don't miss this opportunity to board on board business. Uh, so, um, thank you for those that are in the room. We're gonna get to you in one minute. Uh, so we're gonna move, uh, quickly to board business because there is a agenda is item on there that we do need to take a vote on. Uh, it was, the idea was floated to me, uh, to have a recess sometime during the summertime in one of the months. Of course, at the pleasure of the board, we'll go ahead and decide if that's what the board wants to do. Uh, so let's see. Okay, so, so, uh, item A, Nanakuli Mailei Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six, to recess in July of twenty twenty-four. Uh, can somebody make a motion, second it, and we can take a vote or motion second, open for discussion and take a vote?
No. I, is that what you're asking for a motion? Because, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not interested in. I, I cannot.
Okay. There's no motion. Okay. All right, no recess. Okay, moving on. Uh, really quickly, B, approval of Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, regular meetings. Um, approve of Tuesday, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four meetings. Okay. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and take a voice vote. All those in favor to support the meeting minutes of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Excuse me. Sorry, one more time. Uh, board members only, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, any abstentions? All right, uh, minutes have been approved. Sorry, that was an aye for me. Okay, and then, uh, going down to agenda is item C, May twenty twenty-four, board member attendance at community meetings. I'm gonna go ahead and give it over to Jeffrey.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go with the people that I have currently present. Please use your microphone. Uh, member IO.
May twenty-eighth, uh, crime prevention meeting at Ever Beach. And then May thirty, it was the Melly on the Lawn at Aluliki. Uh, respecting the paintings that's on Nanakuli at Farrington Highway.
Member Augustin?
Mayor Blangiardi's Town Hall. May second, NHSPTSA. May third, Army Meeting at six oh four beach. May third. There was a scheduled Wymanalo Gulp planning commission meeting that was announced, but no meeting was held or information was provided on May fifteenth. The mural presentation at Alulike, May twenty-second. Crime Prevention Town Hall on May twenty-eighth. And the Nanakuli PTA meeting. Thank you.
Chair of the Court?
Wainai Coast Neighborhood Board, uh, Mayor Blangiardi's Town Hall. Wainai Civic Club Meeting. Kawai Honos Ho Ike. Nanakuli Elementary's Malade. Nanakuli Elementary's Malama Ike Kai Showcase. Wainai High School graduation, Nanakuli High School graduation. Prevention Town Hall. Yep, and that's it.
Uh, Board Member Mars?
Um, April thirtieth, because it came after our board meeting, um, Dylan, our special meeting at Wainai. Um, and then May twentieth, the Hawaiian Homes Commission meeting via Zoom. That's it.
Member Tector?
Uh, the Nanakuli PTA and, uh, Town Hall Meeting, Kila.
Member Corona?
Yeah, the mayor's town hall. Uh, the army's informational meeting on Makua Valley. And the crime town hall in Kapolei.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, we're gonna go ahead and go back to officials' reports. Thank you so much. For those in the room, uh, we'll go ahead and call Governor's Rep Gary Yamashiroya. Thank you so much. Please give your report. Thank you for your patience, Gary.
I don't know, Chair of the Court, uh, members of the board. Uh, just to follow up on some community concerns that were brought up at the last meeting. Um, the issue of child safety and traffic for the Wainai Kaponu Elementary was brought up last, uh, at the last meeting. So I reached out to the OE to find out what the status of, uh, any efforts there. The response was they're actively partnering with HPD to enhance safety measures. Um, changes that the school has already implemented include introducing an Ohano lane for pickup, facilitating pickup here at the state library, maintaining a consistent grounds transportation service, adjusting after-school staffing to provide continuous adult supervision until two forty-five PM to help alleviate the need for parents to arrive early for pickup, installing digital speed signs and rounding corners to address speeding concerns, and communicating important safety protocol reminders such as using crosswalks and walking home safely with their parent bulletin. The administration also plans to incorporate parent workshops or meetings specially focused on pedestrian and traffic safety and helps to set up a parent volunteer program where parents can sign up to help with pedestrian safety initiatives. Just wanted to announce there were two grants that were offered by the Hawaii Department of Agriculture regarding invasive coconut rhinoceros beetles. Although the deadline for that, it was four hundred thousand dollars that was available for community-based programs. The deadline was June seventh for those. But HCOA wants everybody to know that they're going to be providing additional grants going forward to address coconut rhinoceros beetle. But this last round, Oahu had at least eight grants with a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars per grant to nonprofits to develop and execute execute programs to mitigate CRB in the community. And for Kuaui, Maui, Molokai, Hawaii Island, and Oahu, one nonprofit organization on each island will be awarded forty thousand dollars for to to manage green waste, which is where the coconut rhinoceros beetle, they develop, I guess, the larva. Finally, regarding the broken emergency sirens that were brought up, I reached out to Haima, and they wanted to let you know that the Nanakuli Maile Siren is currently slated for repair. Once a contractor has been approved, repair work should begin in the coming months.
Okay, very good. Very, okay. So because of time, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next report. And then if anybody has any questions, you can talk to Gary. But let's go ahead and move on to Mayor's Rep Erwin Koata. And then, Erwin, you can go ahead and go straight into Board of Water Supply.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam Chair, board members, everyone in the community. For the Mayor's Rep Report, I did submit it. It just includes some highlights of the mayor's newsletter, including his signing of a resolution creating an ocean safety department. We also responded to some questions to HFD and HPD about their preparations for One Electric's power safe, public safety power shut-off. That includes working with other city agencies to come up with some, develop some plans. Also, answering a question that the Department of Environmental Services is reaching out to the Wayne Night Valley Homestead Community Association President to attend their next meeting to discuss possible programs to help residents pay for cesspool conversion. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Erwin.
For Board of Water Supply, I also submitted a report on an eight-inch water and rain break that happened on May twenty-first on Law Lele Street. Also, too, this is, there were some questions that we responded to on financial assistance. We don't have a financial assistance plan, but we can make payment arrangements with customers who are experiencing difficulties in getting their in paying their water bills. There was a question on a special water use petition. We're actually developing a petition to the Commission on Water Resource Management to designate the Wayne Night Moko as a water management area. That petition is to be finished by the end of the year, and there will be opportunities to provide comment. Also, there were some questions on our seventy and one-hundred-year-old pipelines. About eleven percent of our twenty-one hundred miles is comprised of seventy and one-hundred-year-old pipelines. Age alone is not a factor for replacement. That includes other things like main breaks, settlement, and corrosion. And as far as the cost, it can include several hundred million dollars to replace these pipelines if needed. So there are any other questions, we'd have to take them. Thanks.
Okay, very good. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next official's monthly report. But if you could please, if you could please wait for us afterwards, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to Army. Thank you so much. If you could give your report. Gary, if you wouldn't mind waiting for us after as well. Thank you so much.
Adam Chair, board members, I have a bunch of updates in here, but I'll just get right to the most important. I could stay afterwards and talk to people about the other ones. The draft environmental impact statement for the wire retention of lands has been published. The sixty-day review period is from June seventh to August seventh. There's multiple ways the public can respond to that in writing or in person and online. There's a public meeting that will be held in the Wayne Night District Park Multipurpose Room on July ninth from six to eight P M. There's also other meetings as well that I could talk about afterwards. And that covers the most important thing. I'll have some flyers that I could also leave here for people to look at. It has all the details on this statement. And then I have a follow-up for Board Member Myers that I could talk to her afterwards about her question last time. That's all I have.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And I call my just for the speediness of it. But thank you for waiting afterwards. I will go ahead over to Navy. There you go.
Thank you, brother. Aloha, Victor Flint, Naval Facilities. You already have my written report, so to save time, I'd like to introduce our new Navy Region Public Affairs Officer right here. This is Miss Felipe. And Ju. And Jewel. Jewel Felipe. It comes with age. She's taking Danny's place. Danny's moving on. He moved up to the Navy Closure Task Force. So you might recognize Miss Jewel. I'll let her tell her story. Jewel, my chair.
Shortest one here, though, but maybe I'll just take them off. That's good enough. So on behalf of Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam, I am in the Public Affairs Office, and I'm the new Community Relations Manager, also known as Comrail. And prior to that, I actually let go two of my jobs. I let go KITV for Island News. So as Uncle Vic said, you may recognize me. I used to do weekend morning weather, and I was also behind the scenes as a director. So I was with them for almost seven years. And I also just left the State of Hawaii, State of Hawaii Department of Defense Headquarters up at Diamond Head. So I was actually got sent to Maui during the wildfires at that time, and as well as many other organizations prior. I am born and raised here on the island. However, I am from Kailua, Okailua, Kailua Elementary, Intermediate, Kailua High School. But out of all the jobs that I've done ever since I came back home, yes, I went to college in the mainland, went to Illinois, and I came back. But everywhere that I worked, whether it was KITV, Oha, Bellows Air Force Station, even at the State Senate, I also worked there. And the DOD, as well as now here at Joint Base, no matter where it is that I go, I enjoy being outside. I don't like being in the office. I like being outside with everyone else, communicating, engaging, as well as being cooperative with everyone else. So that is my new job that I've just taken up. We just started less than a month ago, so I don't have an email yet, but I will soon. And when I do, I will hope to share that with all of you.
Mike Kai?
Wow, very good. Yes, like that. Chop chop.
Thanks, Jewel. As a matter of fact, her first job, as far as I know today, is we all got together for this Colicoli Pass workshop. So a lot of our concerns was addressed by multi-agencies, plenty of people. Jewel was there documenting, so Mike, I'll you with that. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Uh, no, no questions right now, but please send over your information so that our board has her contact information and things like that. Welcome. We welcome you. All right, it's ten P M. So.
Chair, can we extend it by five minutes so I can ask the Governor's Rep an important question?
Uh, hold on one second. We might go to officials' reports. Okay, okay. Yeah, you know what? We're just going to go ahead and adjourn. It's ten P M. It's actually one minute over ten P M. So Gary, Gary, if you wouldn't mind staying, I have a few questions for you as well. Christine, I apologize. We won't be able to get to you this time. But announcement, we are going to be having our next Neighborhood Board meeting next month in July, so please join us. That date is July sixteenth. So at this time, our meeting is adjourned. Mahalo, everybody for joining us. Meeting adjourned.